Please take a roll.
Here.
Voorhees?
Here.
Ladies?
Here.
Gampa?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Godus?
Here.
Please rise for the pliable agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, there will be one agenda change on this agenda. Item, if you can find it here, which one did we move off?
Item 11E.
Item 11E will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Shelley, would you please start with the conflict of interest disclosure?
I have no conflicts of interest on this agenda.
I have no conflicts of interest of any item on tonight's agenda.
None.
I also have no conflicts of interest.
None.
I have a conflict of interest on the consent agenda, item B, so I will not be voting on the consent agenda.
No conflicts.
All right, at this point, I'd like to invite anyone from the public who would like to speak to council about any item that is not on this evening's agenda, to come forward, give us your name and address, and Fran, let me your comments to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor and council, Mark Gould, 200 Oak Lane, Glenwood Springs. I just, I'm here because we had a couple of issues that came up, and I just thought I would, the team would like to have you hear what's happening with our project on Seventh Street. So, a couple of weeks ago, we had a few issues with delivery dates of our brick, which we have solved. On Monday, we got a report back from our brick manufacturer that they could get it to us in a timely manner, that we can get our work done, that basically get our July 4 deadline done. And then, secondly, there was an issue of why aren't we starting next week? Well, just, just a reminder to council, this is actually, for most of us that have lived here, plus of 35 to 40 years, this is a little bit of a cool February, and our first work is getting the sewer line in the ground, in which we have embankment. So, you have other projects, city, the Hot Springs Pool, 27th Street, where it's mostly, it's mostly excavation and not embankment. So, I just want to reassure council that we will hit our deadlines. Just because we're not starting on time doesn't mean we won't be completing on time, so nothing to worry about. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Winner? Or should I say, Mr. Gillespie?
Donald.
Don Gillespie, 3901 Mountain Drive. I just had a couple of things I wanted to bring up, and last week, I went downtown to the restaurant to have dinner, and lo and behold, I came upon Cooper Street with this string of cars parked in the middle of it. I just like to express my concern, because I watch people dodge cars as they get in cars and out of cars, and I don't know whose idea it is, I don't want to hurt their feelings, but it should probably go by the wayside of backing in parking that we tried before, because I, I just think it's a bad idea there on Cooper. It's not very pedestrian friendly, nor car friendly, or, I don't know. And you probably gave maybe what, a dozen cars that you park in the middle at night, but it just didn't seem like a good idea. And the second thing I wanted to bring up, I've been talking to quite a few people who live out in Glenwood Park, and, you know, when we travel the gauntlet every day, our biggest worry is the rock slides and rock mitigation. So, I'm hoping when you start this South Midland project, that you take into effect that you ought to do the rock mitigation either ahead of time, or at the same time, because you can put in a lot of good work there, and all of a sudden, it can be wiped out with a rock slide. But it, I know Jonathan should be quite aware of it, that besides being worried about disappearing into a pothole, rock mitigation is probably the biggest problem we have out there, and I hope you look into that while you're doing the improvements in the South Midland.
Part of the plan.
Thanks.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks.
Anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? All right, seeing none, I will close that and bring it back to council for any council comments. I actually have a couple, just real quick ones, if I can get there on my iPad. We had two kind of interesting pieces of information come to us over the last couple of days. One was in an email from Lisa Langer, the, what's your title with the tourism promotion board?
Director of Tourism.
Thank you. She let us know that BuzzFeed put out a report on the six, or on the, yeah, 18 top family vacation destinations in the United States, and Glenwood Springs was ranked number one, so, by BuzzFeed and National. And then, the second item I wanted to bring to everyone's attention was that there was a research, economic research done by the Walton Family Foundation, and this is, was done of 531 micropolitane areas in the United States, and Glenwood was ranked 16th most dynamic micropolitane area in the United States. So, that's kind of impressive, too, I thought, so.
That's, that's pretty amazing.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so, too. All right, moving on, we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening consists of the following: approval of bid BD 2019-006 for a tandem dump truck; ordinance number one, series of 2019, and ordinance of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado amending the Cardiff Glen planned unit development. This is the second reading. Ordinance number five, series of 2019, and ordinance of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado repealing section 01 0.020.071 to the municipal code revoking the authority of the city council and the city manager to temporarily suspend enforcement of portions of the municipal code. This is also a second reading. Approval of right Glenwood rebranding proposal, and IGA related to downtown bathrooms, planning and zoning commission appointment, resolution 2019-11 authorizing and supporting application of the Fishing is Fun grant from Colorado Parks and Wildlife for the Two River Shoreline Project, resolution 2019-12 authorizing and supporting the application for FMLD grant for water, roadway, and drainage redesign within Cedar Crest subdivision, and receipt of the minutes of the February 7, 2019, regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A second.
A motion by Jim, and a second by Shelley to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item 11E, resolution 2019-10, a resolution of the city council of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado adopting downtown parking permit policies.
May I ask that we push that back to after the area-wide, because we have the consultant ready to be called?
All right, we can do that. All right, so, agenda item 12, resolution 2019-9, a resolution of the city council of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, moving forward together U.S. EPA area-wide plan.
Hello?
Hi, Sean. It's, it's all of Glenwood Springs.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying, Sean, if you cannot hear, once we start talking, let us know.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. I'm here this evening to present the Glenwood Springs Moving Forward Together U.S. EPA area-wide plan. The city has been working on this plan since 2017. We had some project kickoff meetings, stakeholder meetings, public open houses, and community workshops in 2017 and 2018, and then, our consultants drafted the plan, and you've had several presentations over the, that period, and so, I'll go through a few of those things, and then you may have some questions as well. The area-wide plan is largely focused on the Confluence area, does provide information about the Holly Quarry site, the West Sixth, Sixth Street area, and then also the C dot site that's on Deveraux. The area-wide plan is intended to be a tool to, to move forward, working with private developers, folks who'd be interested in, in moving forward the vision that is set forth in the area-wide plan, and as it relates to the Confluence, the plan, and some of this language is taken directly from the, from the plan, anticipates a master agreement between the city and developer would be executed to define the parameters of what elements the developer would be responsible to design and construct, and then those that the city would design and construct. There are some recommendations regarding to next steps for the city, including pursuing environmental assessments for properties previously owned by the railroad, specifically in the Confluence area, developing traffic and parking studies that take into account the potential new development in the Confluence area, and working with partners such as RFTA on those, those plans, because we have lots of areas where our interests and theirs intersect as it relates to their development of their continuing operation for RFTA, performing a comprehensive survey of the whole Confluence area, and then developing preliminary engineering for infrastructure, including utilities. The plan in broad strokes discusses the importance of place making. It doesn't dictate the specific aesthetic, but does talk about the importance of public space, the importance of the buildings and how they're placed, their height, how that interfaces with Seventh Street as it continues from downtown toward the river, and, and taking care with the materials and the placement of all of those elements. And then, there's just a piece from the plan, talking specifically about mixed use, how the, kind of what those kinds of things will look like. So, it's not, you know, so specific that it talks about the exact type of materials, but kind of gives some ideas about the importance of public spaces, the importance of how the, all of the buildings play into their relationship to downtown, and then also the relationship to the river. There are three alternative site reuse plans that are discussed in the plan, that are really born out of kind of the rail banking and railroad corridor piece that runs through the, the Confluence. Alternative A assumes that there is a 55-foot right-of-way, so a smaller right-of-way than is, is actually there today. This plan shows a commuter rail station, oh, I'm sorry, light rail station, that would be right here with a light, with a multi-use path in the existing railroad corridor, and there'd be a flyover path, and it does, all of these plans discuss parking, and then also kind of the development yield. And if you have more specific questions, we can kind of go into those. In this iteration, there is a large parking garage that is at Seventh Street and Colorado that would potentially function as a transit center, that could allow RFTA buses to kind of make a circular movement there. Alternative B is a reuse plan that assumes, it's kind of an exercise in going through what could happen if there were no railroad corridor there, if there were no rail banking, and if there were no berm. It's something that we don't necessarily think will happen. It's an exercise in kind of what that development yield could look like if the whole area were allowed to, to lay out with more of a traditional block, block kind of structure, and lining up, for instance, Defiance Avenue. In all of these plans, there are areas that play to the river, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Alternative C is a reuse plan that assumes the existing railroad corridor right-of-way, that is 100 feet, and that, and goes through the development yield, and you had a presentation from Sean, who's on the phone, who kind of went through the various options, and again, if you have other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or hopefully Sean will be. In this iteration, there is, again, it shows the, the railroad in this corridor, and then does show also a, a multi-use path, and then, there's a large parking structure that could be a transit center at Defiance, so could accommodate, you know, if RFTA were to have a BRT station potentially, you know, that parking could help serve that. And then, most of the implementation action plan that's in the plan really are kind of geared toward that first option, so a reduced RFTA right-of-way at 55 feet. It does allow for both a rail, a light rail iteration, and also a path in that 55 feet. So, these costs are level of magnitude, order of magnitude kind of costs. They are costs that could be shared by the developer and the city, and the plan notes that those capital projects should be timed with development phasing. So, there is a recommendation that we develop a downtown traffic study that models the impacts to existing traffic patterns and increased traffic generation from the proposed Confluence redevelopment area, a downtown parking study that looks at downtown parking demand. We've been talking with RFTA about how we can integrate those scopes of work, potentially with some scopes of work that they are working on, as they are moving forward with their, I think the, I think it's called the 2040 plan. So, we've been having conversations with them, and will continue to have conversations with them in the next couple of weeks, to kind of see where we are in terms of scope, so that we can maybe not duplicate work, but that we can work together. Comprehensive survey of this area, there are lots of, lots in, in this, in this area that are not necessarily representative of how, like, the right-of-way works today, and we still have, we're still working with the school district on a land transfer at Vogler Park, and so, having this survey information would help us with that effort. We likely need to do a minor subdivision with a plat for some of that, that we haven't yet done for the, the land transfer with the school district, and a comprehensive survey will help us be able to, to look at the whole area as, as a total, and, and then also, we'll be able to, as part of that effort, do that minor subdivision. Additionally, there are recommendations related to engineering for various pieces of, of the puzzle, including the Eighth Street improvement project, capital improvements there for the build-out of Eighth Street, and then, also for the utilities. I think that we don't know exactly where the utilities will go. This plan did look comprehensively at where those utilities are. We've had conversations with our folks in our enterprise funds, you know, looking at where potentially we might want to relocate utilities based on what eventually could be built there, and I think that we would like to do that in concert with a developer, because it, it will serve the development best if we do that, if we time that with the private sector. And then, all of the alternatives do have a piece of a linear park that faces the Roaring Fork River, and there are some kind of order of magnitude costs for what that construction of that park piece could look like, and, you know, it, it's certainly something that would need to be developed, again, could be in concert with a private developer. We are in anticipation of approval of this resolution this evening, prepared to release an RFQ for the Confluence area tomorrow. It's been noticed, and we are in anticipation of that, have said that the plan will be approved. So, with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have, and I'm sure that Sean will be available as well.
Thanks, Jen. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one question. So, some of these costs in here, and some of the things, it seems like we're, I just want to make sure I'm clear, that we'd be a little bit ahead of ourself if we agreed to move any utilities around at this point. Those are just estimates, those are something that, that will have to happen eventually. I mean, my, my understanding is this is kind of a guiding document, like we do a lot of times up here, that would give somebody who we might choose through this RFQ process the ability to have a lot of good information before they start with nothing.
Absolutely.
Is that kind of, am I right on that path?
Yeah, so, these are estimates, I mean, I think that they're, a lot of the information related to the infrastructure, some of that's related to
Those are just estimates, those are something that will have to happen eventually. I mean, my understanding is this is kind of a guiding document like we do a lot of times up here that would give somebody who we might choose through this RFQ process the ability to have a lot of good information before they start with nothing.
Absolutely.
Is that kind of, am I right on that path?
Yeah, so these are estimates. I mean, I think that there, a lot of the information related to the infrastructure, some of that's related to information that we have from our engineering department that we've shared with the consultants. So, but yes, there are kind of big round numbers that are, you know, this is, as you're moving forward to making this Confluence area come to fruition, these are the kinds of numbers that you're going to want to think about.
Okay.
But it's not that we've gone out and, you know, asked for, a bid for any of these services.
If we approve this tonight and everyone was on board with approval, it's not like we're going to go do $150,000 ALTA survey starting tomorrow with the whole area. That's not what we're doing.
No.
Okay.
Although I would say that survey may be one of the first things that we would do.
Right.
But no, we haven't, we haven't moved any of those things forward and, of course, would be talking to council more about that as we go forward. And, you know, if the RFQ comes back and after, you know, so it's going to be open for 90 days, and then there's a negotiation, you find the exact right master developer, you know, they may want to do their own survey. We'll see. I think that...
That was kind of where I was going is, is, I mean, this is a, I think you've done a nice job with this plan and doing everything you've got to us here, but everything in here is up for interpretation when somebody actually comes to the table after a long process of the folks vetting it, because this is all, this is going to be a public-private deal. So it's going to be a long vetting process and then you can decide where the monies need to be spent from here. That's kind of my take.
And if I can, I think the value here is you're getting a sense of what it's going to cost, what you're going to pay to play, if you're going to do the, you know, any development there. And so these are sort of threshold costs, if you will, and you start digging up utilities and it's hard to know exactly what you're getting into since you're not underground right now and making an estimate of what's down there.
Well, and certainly the alternates, alternatives A, B, C are examples and conceptual. And by the time we actually choose a developer and get under contract, there may very well be a D, E, and F.
Oh, I guarantee, I guarantee there will be.
So I just don't want the public to think that we're locked into something here that's actually going to get built, but it is, has been a great exercise in what the possibilities are and give somebody a kind of a cheat sheet to go forward. We've actually, this is not the first time we've seen this. We've been working on this Confluence plan for, I don't know, 20 years.
This is definitely the furthest we've ever moved the needle.
We've ever gotten it.
By far, by far. I mean, we've seen conceptuals, but nothing this, nothing this detailed.
Right.
And for the next step to happen, you got to go here first.
Yep.
That's not a question. I'll quit my statements.
I had a question.
Shelley.
I had a question, and I guess, Jen, this is either for you or Sean is on the line. I was real impressed with the report and I, you know, the options do give us a scale of kind of the A, B, and C of capacity of development, you know, as they see it and whether or not the RFTA right-of-way is in there and with the berm. But my question is, all of the next steps that I see, and there's a very good outline of next steps for how the city moves the Confluence development forward, because this is going to be a long, multi-gear process. This isn't going to be fast and we want to develop it slowly in context of our city. But most of the steps that I see are things that I would imagine the city doing, like traffic studies, environmental assessments of the old railroad corridor, the survey, you know, evaluating the utilities. So I'm just wondering, and I guess this is a question for Sean, in a typical, you know, rather large-scale development like this for a town our size, what would be the optimum time to bring in a master developer? Is it now or would we, would we be better off having some of these questions answered? Because these seem like studies that the city could initiate on its own with, you know, with the plan in hand.
Sean, did you hear that question?
Yes, I did. I, I think that the main value of the work that's been done that's represented in this report is a level of information that's comprehensive enough that you can now engage the development arm of the equation, the private sector. So they have enough information to come back and present their interpretation of this information combined with their understanding of the market and their piece of the equation that is critical because we have identified some of the very thick elements that both the city and the private sector will have to work with. And it is the infrastructure pieces primarily.
Right.
Other, other elements, the shape of the public spaces and programming and aesthetics and all those things, those things are all elements that are fairly flexible and negotiable. And so I think now, having this document to the benefit of both sides, it is a good time to engage the private sector because the feedback that you'll get on the economics from their perspective will help inform and prioritize that laundry list of items that we identified as things that you need to deal with upfront. Now, obviously, some of the elements, and parking is probably the biggest one that jumps out at us, is one that the more you can inform and define the whole parking picture. Because we were looking within the Confluence itself and saying, okay, if you build a residential unit, you need to address the parking for that, and there's extra amount of non-residential space and you need to accommodate some parking for that. But the question becomes in the broader scale, what is the bigger parking equation for all of downtown? And do you need to take the opportunity if you're going to invest either as a public facility or a joint public-private facility for parking supply? Should it happen here and how much of it needs to happen here? And I think the other piece of it is the discussions we had with RFTA is, obviously, promoting transit supports a whole kind of vision of the character and the idea of the kind of transit arena development and transit-oriented downtown. But parking could be, and it's likely to be some component of an equation of improved transit ridership and service. We don't know what that is now, but the opportunity does exist very soon because of the work that RFTA is doing to help look at how to calibrate that at a much more refined level than we were able to do in this planning effort. So I think the time is right to go to the private sector with the understanding that some of these elements, like the parking and the transit piece, you do need, you kind of do need to move on those things right away. And then I would say the last piece of that is the environmental element you should move ahead with as soon as you have the resources as well because from a transactional standpoint, that will be something that needs to be addressed because more than likely it'll be private financing and the development side of the equation and the environmental clearance will need to be solidified before financing to be put in place.
Okay, great. That's, that's very helpful. I was interested in the part of the report when you talked about the transportation impacts and studies, you know, being broader in the community too. So found that really helpful in the report. Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other questions for Jen or Sean? Is there anyone in the public would like to make any comments regarding this? Mr. Gillespie.
I wanted to give my name and address to get to it. Ever since you guys passed the Resolution 201741, I was kind of concerned about it. I just didn't know you guys had fast-tracked this thing to this point. But I, in the two years since the resolution was put forth, I didn't hear one person that I've met around town who's in favor of developing this. They want it to be recreational. They think these two rivers are quite a treasure and to see a private ownership partnership going on down here kind of bothers them. And I can imagine how much cost would be reduced if you just had this as a recreational area instead of some kind of a profit-making deal. And I'd love to see the public get a vote on this. Would they rather see it developed or would they like to see it stay as a recreational area? And I know it's too late for the April election, but I'd just like to see us back off a little bit here because the more that's being discussed tonight, seems like there's some fast-track going on here, especially from the consultant that's on the phone already asking you to do some private connections on here. So I really think you guys need to step back a little bit here because I don't think the general public really wants to give up this Confluence area to a private development, city development. And when you do this, you're giving up a lot of control. And I don't know, I've been here 43 years. We've always thought of this area to be developed as a recreational area, not as some kind of a private partnership deal. And I've walked that area thousands of times and there's not a whole lot of area down there. And you're trying to cram a lot of stuff into this one little area and with the 100-year floodplain and having to deal with RFTA and the railroad, you're talking, spend a lot of bucks here. And if you went strictly recreational use, you don't have to get all this involved and all this kind of studies and, I don't know, I'd just like to see you back off. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this?
I'm Richard Voltero. I live in Carbondale. And a couple of years ago, I happened to pick up a copy of the, I believe it's Architectural News. And what it showcased was cities who were re-embracing their waterfronts and their confluences. And some cities went to great lengths to uncover what was once covered by concrete and development and other things to open up their waterfronts and their connections to the river to more public use. And once that had taken place, and you can see that, say in, for instance, Denver, down Cherry Creek, there's a way for the people to move up and down the Cherry Creek corridor on walkways and bicycling. And that is a highly-used area now, both for some recreation, but also some daily commuting because it's down out of the traffic. Here, it's certainly a different story. But the cities that did re-embrace their waterfronts and their waterways found that the public use increased dramatically and it reconnected the citizenry of the area to their very most important asset, and that was the waterways. Because all of us are tied to nature by water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard? Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this? Mr. Blair?
Thank you, sir. I am Michael Blair. I live on Sprucewood Lane here in Glenwood Springs. I would comment on the development along the riverbank and the waterfront also. As a planner, I worked on a number of plans that I thought were excellent since I made them for that area. But I too, along with some other associates of mine, felt that there was a great deal of opportunity for private development there along there, which would be a great service to people visiting the waterfront as well as a great element for the city of Glenwood Springs. But as I showed it to people and we talked to people, the great majority of the folks said, no, leave it open. Don't put private development there. But I think there is room for some small amount of commercial development to serve visitors to the river and along the open space, whether it be a recreation facility or eating and drinking facility. We've got to have a place for beer and pizza. But things like that to serve visitors along the waterfront. But the Confluence, as was pointed out by others, is a great treasure to the city and to cover it with private development, I think would be quite opposing to the majority of the desire of people, at least that I've talked to within the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this plan? Mr. Anderson?
Clark Anderson, 1028 Palmer Avenue. Sorry I missed the presentation. I know this area pretty well. We, my organization, conservation organization, as it were, helped the community do a process for visioning the future of this area, starting in 2013. And so all I want to do, and I'm, again, I'm sorry I missed the presentation, I tried to be here in time to, I thought it was at 6:30, is just share what we learned from that. There was a real balance between the different interests within the community. There are a lot of members of the community who want to see this area connect the downtown to the river. And that didn't just mean providing a purely natural space for people. It meant, let's really try to bring and connect the downtown to the river and create an active space where the community can come together in a pretty beautiful area. There are an equal number of people who are really committed to the fact that they love the river corridor and we've done a really good job of turning our backs on rivers in this city and others in the past. And so we are in an era where it's time to begin re-loving our rivers again, and how do we do that? And so the plans that have been developed over the last few years, and this is kind of, I think, the most recent evolution and I think a very good one of that, I think actually balances those things pretty well. It's going to be pretty hard to find a final plan that accomplishes what both sides of that coin want, right? There's going to be a group of people who want to see this remain completely open and they're going to be people who want it to feel more like San Antonio Riverwalk, right? Where it's literally, you know, building grout up to the edge of the river. What's really important is that there is quality public space along the riverfront that the community can enjoy. If we're interested in environmental conservation, and I am, and I spent a lot of my career doing work focused on protecting water quality and supply, a lot of what I did is help communities figure out how to align their local planning and development policies with protecting water quality and supply. This isn't where we want to focus. We want to focus on thinking about how we can encourage more efficient development patterns. We want to focus on figuring out how we're not spreading out and sprawling everywhere. We're not going to protect our rivers by not embracing them in the places where we're targeting growth and where our communities are going to grow. And I'm, you know, sorry to anybody who disagrees with that, but there's a lot of data supported by the environmental protection agencies, EPA and others. It really shows if you want to have, protect, if you want to protect rivers and waterways and water quality, it's critical that we grow smarter. Part of growing smarter is going to be encouraging development in areas where we already have infrastructure. This is already an area that's relatively impervious. So we need to do it smart. We need to have a strong balance between developing a good quality public space and one that allows people access to the river and, you know, we need to have a soft touch on the riverfront. And I think you can do that while also accomplishing really quality development there that allows the community of Glenwood Springs to continue to grow. This, this town has choices to make about where it's going to grow, but not many. So we can either grow out or we're going to grow in. And if we grow out, we're going to have a lot more impact on the environment than if we figure out ways to grow in. So that's a choice we have to look at. And those were things that were, that were discussed in the process that included a lot of people and community input, a lot of public meetings and things like that. So I just want to return people to the idea that the result of that work came to a real balance of let's safeguard the riverfront, but also let's enable and activate that space with some quality development. Thanks.
Thanks, Clark. Mr. Moffett?
At some point in time, you need to be sitting up here.
At some point in time, you need to be sitting up here.
Dean Moffett, 326 Second Street. I didn't come here tonight for this, but it's very engaging. I think that the past four speakers have really touched on a lot of really good data that should be taken into consideration before moving forward. The three plans have between 12 and 14 rectangles spread all over. And it's kind of like the blank slate has been provided and boxes have been put in to max it. I think that we're missing a step. If we go back three or even four decades, talking about the confluence, you'll see a mix of what the last four individuals have talked about: open space, recreation, marketing, tourism, restoration, riverfront development. And I don't mean man-made development, I mean parks and broadways and things of that nature, and beer and pizza too. So, looking at these three schemes, fresh on without being involved for years, it really says to me, we're missing a step of master planning. This is master planning, but it's from a max-the-development potential viewpoint. And I think that that element has to be set aside momentarily and really look at what the goals and objectives of this city are, and where we want to go and what's missing. For years, I've been thinking, we need a community theater there. And I suppose one of those brown boxes could be a theater, but then there's nothing around it. You know, there's just streets and more apartments. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I will close it to the public and bring it back to council for discussion and your motion.
Oh, something's already beeped.
Jim?
Yeah, a lot of good comments and a lot of things to balance here. I'm going to support that we move forward with this, but I have some reservations with it, and I want to share those so that as we do move forward, we don't end up with some of the things that we've been warned about. When I looked at the report, it talks about what the community input was, what the community's goals were. First one was connect with the river. Embrace and enhance the rivers, improve access and recreation. Third one down is prioritize the pedestrian and design and complete the streets to create safe, walkable, bikeable connections within that area and to the rest of the downtown. And personally, I, when I see those three drawings, I don't think they do that. And so, as we move forward, I guess I will just say, I will probably continue to maybe be a thorn in the side or to push on those items. If I go forward a few more pages in the report, I see these, and you just saw them up on the screen, you know, these great big parking structures right along the Colorado River. I don't think that's a good way to connect the people with the river and the river environment. I won't support that. I also feel that parking is wagging the dog a little too much here. This is a beautiful space, potential area, regardless of what we decide to do with it. And the last thing I want to do is fill it up with a bunch of parking spaces because there's a template that says, you know, when you build, you have to have so much and end up with half of this beautiful land being a parking structure. I'm not going to support that going forward. I am going to support, moving forward with this document, I don't think we're getting out too far ahead. I know we were cautioned on that, and I agree with it, but I don't feel it's too far ahead because I think for us to begin a process to say, okay, this sets forth the challenges that are here, what will this look like so we actually have something we can bring before the public that shows perhaps the balance of what we're trying to achieve or puts real alternatives on the table? And unless we, I think, move forward with this, we're not going to get to that point. So, with that being said, I'm going to make a motion, but I encourage all the other counselors, I'm just going to make it to get it on the table, but the other counselors to share their comments, and I'm going to, my motion is to, that we approve the wide-area plan and proceed with the request for qualifications.
All right, thanks, Jim. Is there a second while we have a motion on the floor?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Jim and a second by Todd to approve Resolution 2019-9. Todd, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, yeah. First of all, I'd like to thank Jennifer Oden. This is absolutely excellent work. I mean, we've moved the confluence to another level of possibility, and that is, that is what we're doing right here. Nobody's approving any boxes, nobody's approving any architectural tonight. We're proving, we're trying to move the confluence forward with concepts of what's possible, what's possible with our utilities, what's going to be needed. So, these boxes that you see on these drawings, that's not what's coming, that's not what's showing up. These are all just concepts. And this is, if you will, kind of all preliminary planning to give somebody the opportunity to bring their vision to the public. Almost, almost, not every piece, but almost every single piece of ground down here is publicly owned. So the public is going to get a chance, many, many chances in my opinion, to speak their mind about this. You know, this is just, this just moves the needle forward so that eventually the public can comment on it. I see it much like the Grand Avenue Bridge project, and I hope I don't scare off any RFQ suitors, but I, I mean, we were at tents after tents at Strawberry Days about what do you, what does the public think about this bridge? What do you think about these aesthetics? What do you think about the curvature of the bridge? Should we do it straight? Should we curve it? All of those discussions are going to happen because it's the public's land. So it's your land, you're going to participate in this entire process. So, this is the first step in allowing you guys to participate, and then the next step would be to get a developer on board who can come with their vision and their economic plan for how something shows up down there. Because nothing's going to show up unless it's economically viable. So, without this step, we're just stuck down there. And this is just an absolutely excellent step for, for real-life discussions, real, honest discussions about what can happen down there. And I'm just super impressed with what you've done, Jennifer. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Rick?
Yeah, I'm willing to support the motion too. In order to move the discussion forward, I was struck by what Clark had to say about either developing out or developing in. And all of this would have to pencil out, number one, and it would have to pencil out in a way that's going to be aesthetically pleasing, I think, to this town. And between those two, there's a gulf. And the more that you build in means the more that you have to build up usually. And to get the square footage and to have the projections about what could pay for itself are questions that we don't have answers for right now. So I think that just getting the facts out and letting the public make up their minds would be sort of a step forward. So I'm going to support the motion.
Thanks, Rick. Shelley?
I too will support this motion. And I would encourage anybody out there, if you're curious about this plan, please you can go on to our agenda for tonight's meeting, and you can download a copy of this plan. It's a really good plan. And it has its foundation in the 2017 Confluence Redevelopment Plan, which was put together by the community over the course of almost 10 years with a lot of community input. And, and as Jim mentioned, some of the goals on that are to connect to the river. And we have a river commission that works on taking care of, helping us take care of the river and treat it in a quality way. So, you know, my vision is that that river park is something that this whole town can be proud of and a place where we want to go and gather and enjoy the river. It's also, we also envision housing. We have such a need for housing in this community. What an incredible place to be able to live. And if we can do this right, I just believe that it will be beautiful and an incredible element of the city and connected to downtown. If we can connect it to transit, we can make this a beautiful place. So, I think we keep that vision moving forward, and thank you to community builders for helping to build that original confluence plan. We were so fortunate to receive the, was it $200,000 from the EPA to do this brownfield and this area-wide plan to help us move this forward. I think we stay together as a community. We look at trying to bring a master developer on board because this is not the type of thing that we can do on our own. We need partners. But at the same time, we need to keep together as a community and make this our vision and our space. So, that's what I'll support going forward.
That's really well said. Thank you.
Steve?
Well, I just want to briefly say that I too will, of course, support this next step in this confluence project. If, if I was given the choice of these three alternatives, I wouldn't support it. But I know that somebody's going to come up with a better idea and a better plan. And I ran for, to come on council four years ago because of this particular project. And here we are, four years later, and we're just now to the point where we're going to remove the old sewer plant that's down there and hopefully improve the tunnel access along the way. I'm excited about this. This is the absolute jewel of Glenwood Springs. I'm not excited, Dean, about the appearance of the density down there, but if there's going to be density, and somewhere it needs to be in that area, not necessarily on the west side of the, of the train right-of-way there. I'm very interested in public access and recreation. I'm interested in the, in the public amenities along the riverfront. And because this is just coming to us, and I kind of thought four years ago, I was up here for one term, but now I can't back off. So I'm up here for four more years to make sure that the public doesn't get left behind or left out of this picture. It's really important to this community, it will be for the next 100 years, and it's going to take everybody's input along the way to make sure that we get the right development down here, and, and I'm excited about it.
Thanks, Steve. I appreciate all the comments by the council up here and by the public. In terms of whether we should put the brakes on this process or continue to move forward, I think it should be noted that this process really began by this city more than 20 years ago when the wastewater treatment plant was in operation on this site, and there was a decision by the council at that time to relocate it. This property was fraught with a huge number of constraints, that being one of them. There was, the city's wastewater plant was on this site. The city spent $32 million to relocate that wastewater plant to open up this site. Since then, over the last eight years that I've been on council, we were able to push through the connection of 8th Street, and that was something the city has been trying to do for 20 years. We were able to negotiate the grade of that with RFTA so that it didn't have to be a 20-foot-deep cut under the railroad, which would have made it a pretty ineffectual connection for this property. We were able to acquire Union Pacific Railroad from this entire area. They no longer own any right-of-way on either of the, either the west or the east leg of the Y. The east leg of the Y is no longer a designated railroad. It is now abandoned as a railroad. All of those things have been fairly monumental efforts put forth by this city over the last 20 or 25 years, and in many cases, over the last eight years, to move this property forward. And as Todd said, nothing is going to happen on this property effectively without a vote of the people. So whatever happens, by whomever, whether it's, you know, residential development or commercial development, or, you know, a public arts performance center, whatever, it's going to be, there's going to be more input by the city, and most likely, there's going to be a vote by the city residents. So, we're still a long way from seeing anything happen down here, but I will certainly support adopting this plan and moving, moving the process forward. Any further discussions?
Let's go ahead and call the question.
Are we voting like this tonight? What are we doing?
Are we voting on our computers or on our buttons?
How do you vote?
Buttons?
Okay.
Okay.
They're keep moving it around on us, so we never know.
Small detail, I don't know.
And it killed a great transition, Mike. You rolled right into that, and then it's like, ah.
Agrohans, Godeshess, Davisshess, Gamba Yes, Lady Yes, Burri Yes, Kard Yes, Wonjihap Tijun Yes.
Thank you.
We have changing technology up here on how we vote, so we're still struggling.
Thanks, Jen.
Yep, thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
If Sean's still on the line, thank you, Sean.
Oh, I said thank you and hung up. I'm sorry.
All right, so we'll go back to item 11E, Resolution 2019-10, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, adopting downtown parking permit policies. Do you have a presentation on this?
I think Terry and I are going to do it together, but I can start. We started talking with you guys about downtown parking on November 15th of last year, and we had, I believe, a work session and then an evening session. We generally talked about, and moving forward agreement with the county to create for our parking in the Colorado and 7th Lot, eliminating visitor parking passes in the GID, allowing up to two parking passes per unit, but requiring license holders to apply in person with a proof of address, charging an administrative fee of $50. Almost everything we do does come with an administrative fee. This was kind of an outlier. And then allowing 72-hour parking in the parking lot at Cooper and 8th. We also made some minor adjustments that I'm less familiar with in our construction permitting.
Yeah, it stayed pretty much the same, that section.
Maybe we just updated how it looked before that.
Yeah, that was pretty much it with that.
We're, essentially, we brought back what we talked about. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions for Deborah or Chief Wilson? No. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? I was asked to read...
Wait a minute, if you had a hand, go up.
Brad.
Okay, go, yeah, go ahead.
I'm Brad Hancock. I live downtown over at Cooper Wine and Spirits. And so, I just found out about this today because of the article in the paper. And so, my, I was like, whoa, I didn't even know this was happening. And the first question I had was, what's the problem? I understand there's a parking problem. When I got up this morning and I went outside, there was no parking problem at 6:30 this morning. So, so there's no parking problem at times, so I presume that we're talking about access to businesses, but I don't even know. What is, what is the source of the parking problem? Do we, do you guys, can you say?
Question-answer with us, you can give us your comments, and then we'll, we'll try and respond to your questions.
That's great. So, I presume that it's daytime parking for businesses. I believe that, that's the concern, is that, that we have access problems for people to come in and do business downtown. And so, when you're asking us downtown residents to now pay for a permit, what you're asking for is the people who live downtown but don't leave downtown to now have to pay for their parking. Because if you're leaving downtown, you don't have to pay for your parking, right? I mean, that's, you don't have to pay for it. So, so what you're now doing is asking us to pay to stay downtown and commute to our jobs, not using our cars, which in my mind is really backwards when you think about the overarching goal of the whole global warming problem, which I think is going to be... be our large problem as it comes, as, as time comes through. So, it seems to me like the downtown residents are a captive audience. It's a knee-jerk reaction to try to, try to reduce the amount of parking that they take up and, and in my mind, that is working against having downtown residents. Another thing hassling the downtown residents. Um, so, I, I wonder what other solutions have been approached? Have you considered, uh, any other thing other than just saying, "Well, if we reduce the amount of downtown parking by residents, then we're going to help solve this problem." And so, I work downtown. I didn't see practically any enforcement of parking rules happening this winter. I don't know whether it's because Janie was sick or, or what, but, but in my mind, have you considered more enforcement of the existing rules to solve this problem? Um, I also have no idea if anybody's given any thought to studying if the owners and employees of businesses are a problem that's happening down here. Or should we, should we consider making it more difficult for them to park downtown and allowing more of their clientele easier access to space? One of the things that I know happens is that business owners and employees go and they do the musical chairs, move their car from one two-hour spot to another two-hour spot, which doesn't actually free up any parking spot. It, it, in my mind, defeats the purpose of the whole two-hour thing. And there are many communities that have solved this problem by keeping track of license numbers and allowing you only one park in a two-hour zone for your license number, which would eliminate completely the two-hour, the two-hour Brownian motion. So, um, so I think that, that there are many things that you could do to consider without hassling downtown people more for their parking. And why, why is there no parking for residents at the sewage treatment plant lot? Nobody, no downtown residents that I know park down there. So, why are you eliminating that? That certainly can't be to allow better access to downtown businesses. To me, that's just saying the city and, city and county employees are more deserving of convenient parking access than downtown residents, okay? If that's the position, that's the position, but don't try to couch it as being for better business access. And so, what, my, my overarching question is, does the city value downtown residents? Does it value core residents? And if so, are you, are you, why are you making yet another thing to discourage our ability to live conveniently downtown? Eliminating parking spaces, adding fees to us, just makes it harder and harder for us to stay downtown, work downtown, live downtown, and commute to our jobs by our fee, which I would...
Did you wrap up your, beyond your three minutes?
Okay, great. And I'm done. So, just if you, if you'd like, I would like you to consider how the downtown community, how the residents of the downtown community fit in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this set of rules? Mr. Blair?
Again, I'm Michael Blair. I live across the river, but, and I don't live in the downtown area, but I park there occasionally. Um, but first, I want to make a comment to give my great appreciation to this, to the city, uh, street maintenance crew for patching a lot of the winter potholes that come along. I think they do a good job based on the streets that I drive on and I think they need some recognition for that. I appreciate their efforts, especially patching holes in the wet, cold wintertime. Um, first, I just want to say generally about what's helping to create the parking problem downtown, other than more people coming, which is what we want, but we don't like at the same time. Um, in my experience in sitting on the planning commission for many years, uh, we received lots of applications for variances, uh, to excuse the requirement for, uh, on-street parking for new housing development on the, on the, the streets, side streets next to the downtown area, uh, where they want to build an extra unit or enlarge a unit to rent out part. Anyway, whatever the growth would be, it usually attracted more automobiles. And I understand and appreciate the folks not wanting to take up their property with parking space. And I think that was intended to give them some relief and I agreed with that, but it also creates the on-street parking problem. It just adds more cars to it. Uh, and I think the, the use of the variances for that purpose really should be revisited because it's just creating more of an on-street parking. And I think that was unintended, but that's what's, one of the things adding to the on-street parking problem. Second is the improvement district idea back in the 1980s when it was developed. I thought that was a good idea, but I don't think it envisioned all the additional automobiles that are going to be coming into town and the new development that might be occurring around town. So, that effort does not keep up with the, with the, uh, automobile parking, uh, immediately. It takes too many years for the contributions from the, uh, improvement district users to fund enough money to build a new parking structure or something like that. In the meantime, we have to suffer for 10 or 20 or more years, uh, without parking. And, uh, I've noticed also that there are more employees downtown, especially in the evenings, where they come and park their cars when the folks, the residents of the area are wanting to get it home and park their cars on the street. So, uh, those comments, I think, are worthy of some consideration and I hope they are of some value to you. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on the downtown parking regulations? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or motion. Uh, Jim? Oh, I apologize. I was supposed to read, um, a woman, uh, named Mariah Smallwood, who owns Crystal Tuning at 819 Grand Avenue, sent in some comments that she wanted read here. I think these are paraphrased, I think, from a phone call, so I'm just going to read them verbatim. She did rent a parking space in parking lot, $75 per month. Lot has been bought. Will probably lose her spot. Waiting list is at the bank and other lots for reserved parking spots. Parking garages are always full. Her employees run late because of it. Renters above her business have residential and visitor parking passes. Park right in front of business. Give visitor permits to friends and employees. One renter has a business downtown. Cars never leave. Many people with passes just leave their car on Grand Avenue for weeks or months at a time. Not good for businesses. Spots are always taken by residential passes. A lot of abuse by the current pass system. So, there we go. Now, I apologize, Jim.
Yeah, no, no, no problem. Um, yeah, the, the current proposal that's here, um, I would only personally support with the modification. I think we, we do have a parking issue that we're all aware of and are trying to find balance and, uh, to it. Um, I believe currently the residents, uh, up to two residents, I think, per household, uh, receive a permit and there's no plan to change that whatsoever. Um, there is, in addition, a guest permit, and so the proposal is to, uh, do away with the guest permit, but that still leaves, uh, two parking permits for residents per household. Um, the, the aspect that I would, if I, if I were going to make a motion, I won't, I want to hear what the other councillors say, but, uh, that I would like to see changed is the charging of an administrative fee. We, we looked at this, this is, we didn't look at this to raise money, uh, and in fact, it wouldn't raise much money. Um, this is about trying to deal with a parking issue downtown by making a very incremental change, the removal only of the guest permit and enforcing a reasonable hourly, um, time limit in the Colorado and Seventh Lot. Um, there were a lot of other, frankly, ideas that were tossed out to us. Let's do paid parking. That'll stop employees from moving around, all these different things. Those are, were too, too much change, too radical. We felt, let's go very small incremental change, basically removing the guest permit. That's what we were trying to accomplish. We're not trying to, uh, soak the residents for any money, uh, and, and, and so I'm not in favor of the $50 permit fee. We do have permit fees for many things down and I'm totally in favor of. This one, uh, I would not be. That's, that's my comments.
Thanks, Jim. Steve?
Um, yeah, I guess I'll jump out there. I, you know, I, the Glenwood Post, I think, generally does a, a great job, but it looked like this morning they were looking for some kind of headline and I think it was very confusing to people. Um, I had a conversation out in the hall today at City Hall with somebody who has been here for 50 years and who has sat on our, uh, PNZ for the last, uh, six years. And, uh, he had grabbed me about comments he had about the headlines today and he had absolutely no idea that there had ever been a residential parking pass system in place and was shocked to hear that because he read the newspaper today and he was convinced that this whole residential parking pass was a new program and it's not. Uh, we've had it forever. The changes that we're talking about implementing are very minor, actually. Uh, currently, uh, if you live in an apartment downtown, you could go in and, to the police department and they would, uh, you could prove that you, um, had an apartment and regardless of whether you, who, how many people you had, or maybe you were just living by yourself, they would give you two parking passes and a guest pass. You're saying, "No, but I know it's true." And, uh, and then you could use that for your car and then you just hand off the other pass to your buddy who lives in rifle. So, we kind of thought that should be looked at a little closer. And now you have to go in individually and approve your residency in that apartment and, uh, pull a pass separately. Um, so that changes. And then there was a conversation about the fee. The fee is not about pay to park. Uh, the fee is about an administrative fee because the police department gets the burden of issuing the permit and then tracking those permits throughout the year and sending out renewal notices at the end of the year and then issuing new permits. And just like everything at the city, there typically is some kind of a fee to cover the administrative, uh, work that, that occurs as a result of that. If you have a chicken in your backyard, you have to pay $35 for that permit to do that. So, we thought it just seemed reasonable that the police department should be, uh, subsidized a little bit by a permit fee that would amount to 12 cents a day if you wanted to have a permit that said you could leave your car there forever in a two-hour parking place and not worry about getting a ticket. Now, I said forever. It's actually 72 hours is the rule, but, uh, oftentimes that goes on for days and weeks. So, we're trying desperately to come up with a plan that moves traffic, moves parking along a little better. We weren't trying to really disrupt anybody's life. If you've got to live downtown, you've got a permit now. There's nothing that says you can't always have a permit. You're just not going to be able to have one that you can give to your friend that lives on rifle. That's about all I've got to say about that.
Thanks, Steve.
All right. We'll try and wrap this up a little bit quicker. Um, so I'm, I'm obviously a huge fan of our downtown. I mean, I live downtown. I live a few blocks, I think, from, um, from, from where you work down there. We're, this is a really, I, I know you might not believe this tonight, but this is very measured response to businesses that have been coming to us and, and asking for some changes. And we're trying to strike a balance between business and residential. We obviously want people to live downtown. There's, there's a cost to that. There's a cost to parking downtown. There's a cost to the businesses for residences being parking downtown in those spaces where normally could be used by a business. So, this is a very measured, I think, response. It's, it's, it's helping both sides of the issue, if you will, business and residential. So, we're, we're not trying to penalize anybody for wanting to live downtown. I mean, we love downtown residences. So, um, with that having been said, I would move to approve Resolution 2019-9, a resolution of City Council of Glenwood Springs. Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong page.
2019-10.
2019-10. Sorry, I was on 2019-9. So, there's my motion. I would move to approve 20 day, 2019-10.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Todd and a second by Steve to approve Resolution 2019-10. I did want to just make a couple of quick comments. Um, I'm not sure where the idea that we are prohibiting residential parking at the sewer treatment plant came from. That is actually, uh, we're encouraging them to park there. Uh, in fact, I believe there is no time limitation on that. Am I correct on that?
There is not. The only limitations are there are a couple of spots for the county.
Okay.
And then some spots during construction, but...
But other than that, we're actually encouraging that.
I believe it's a 72-hour lot because we, we encourage people who go on Amtrak to park there.
Okay. Um, so, uh, and with respect to the idea that we've issued variances for downtown, um, residential projects in the past, um, they must not have been really downtown because downtown is within the general improvement district or the GID. And since 1980, we have not required parking for any project, whether it's residential or commercial in the downtown. Good, bad, or ugly. I graduated from high school in 1981, so you don't get a one meter for that one, but, uh, that was in place before I was even out of high school, but, uh, there, there has no, been no parking requirement in the downtown area for whatever that is, 35-plus years, 40, longer than that. I don't know. However, however many years it's been. Um, so, those are some, um, just misunderstandings, I think, that people might have about this. Shelley?
Um, I, I will not be supporting the resolution and I'd just like to tell a little bit of the why. Um, as I remember these, the residential permits came into being about 15 or 20 years ago. As a result of increased traffic and everything downtown, we had to, we had to start enforcement and expand the two-hour limit. Um, at that time, people who lived in downtown needed to be able to park their cars with a reasonable distance of their home, so they were, the residential permits were set up so that they could do that without having to worry about the two-hour limit because they lived downtown and we, the intent was to encourage residents downtown. It helps keep our downtown vibrant. Um, you know, over time, business has grown and parking's getting tighter down there. It's kind of an indication of the success of our downtown. It's a good thing in a way, but it is a headache for a lot of people. And, um, what we really, in my opinion, we need to do is look at this more comprehensively. We need parking solutions. The GID district as it's set up now is a problem because it allows growth and development within that GID boundary downtown with, with just pure exemption from parking. There's a very, very small fee in that area, but it doesn't even generate enough money to build one parking space a year. So, that's something that in my opinion, we need to fix in comprehensively. We can't allow that to go on and think that we're going to solve this problem. And, and the city frankly does not have the kind of money to develop, uh, endless parking garages, you know, to meet a demand. I think the growth should help pay for some of that parking. So, that's part of the solution I would like to see. Um, I, I do, if you can clarify, um, someone asked the question about this new ordinance will prohibit parking at the sewer, the old, um, lot on Seventh. I know that's not right, but it is prohibiting parking at the lot on Colorado and Seventh behind Smoke. It will prohibit residential parking in that lot and it will prohibit the residential permits, um, being effective on Cooper Avenue between Seventh and Eighth. Is that right?
The first block, yes.
The first block. So, so those, those are changes that this would include, so I just want to clarify that. Those are the parts that I don't really agree with and so for those reasons, let's work on comprehensive parking solutions. Maybe at some point, we're going to have to think about paid parking or, um, somehow solving, for years, we've talked about, "How do we solve this two-hour shuffle?" Well, we do have business... do we solve this two-hour shuffle? We do have business owners and office workers downtown that just move their cars every two hours, rather than having a longer-term parking and having them walk in. So, yes.
Can I clarify what I said?
Yes.
It's not that permit can't, permit holders can't park in those spaces. It's just their held the same time limits as everybody else.
Exactly. So, the permits aren't effective, basically. Okay.
Jonathan?
I just want to summarize what this is, just for everybody out there, and for us, and for myself, because I had to read it as well. It's five elements. amend the existing agreement with the county to create four-hour parking with Colorado, in the Colorado and Seventh parking lot. This parking lot is not to allow residential parking permits, and jurors will be allowed to park for additional hours with parking permits. Number two, to eliminate visitor parking in the GID only. Number three, to allow up to two parking passes per unit, but require license holders to apply in person with, in person with proof of address. Number four, charge administrative fee at fifty-dollar permit. Number five, allow seventy-two-hour parking, parking lot, in the parking lot at Cooper and Eighth. So, that's what we're talking about. Those are what we're focusing on here. And I know everybody is kind of getting caught up in the fifty dollars for the permit, and I think I agree with Todd. You know, when he said that it is kind of a measured response to what we have been hearing, but I don't know that it's the right response. And the reason I don't know it's the right response, because there was a study done in two thousand thirteen that addressed parking in the downtown core, I believe, is what it was limited to. And that's two thousand thirteen. That was before the parking ramp. That was before the area-wide plan, and the confluence has been contemplated now. That's before the Twenty-Seventh Street Parking Rafta. That's before the Cancer Center was built at the hospital and the parking issues that are there. That's before the change of ownership and the vitality that the new owners are bringing to Hotel Colorado. Thank you, Christian, the audience. And before the Sixth Street redevelopment plan. So, it is, you know, you think, hey, five years, six years, I guess, now is not, it's not that much of a difference of a town, but it is a wildly different town, both in what the current condition is and the future condition is contemplated. And so, for that reason, I was speaking on behalf of the Transportation Commission, which spent the last two meetings, speaking, getting informed by Terry and Tanya about a lot of these issues, and really deciding, boy, we really, really need to take this on, take a hard look at it, so that we don't spend hours and hours and hours of this meeting doing this. This is where our boards and commissions, I think, are valuable. And after two meetings of going around and around, what was determined was, we need to update that parking study. We need a comprehensive look. And I feel a little bit like what we're doing is trying to piecemeal a few things, and trying to knock off the easy ones that are no-brainers. But, you know, the parking situation is no different today than it was three months ago, and it's probably not going to be that much different than it will be three months from now. So, I'm supportive of updating that parking study, or just doing a new parking study, which takes into account all those other aspects of this community that I just mentioned. And so, I won't be supporting this, because I think it is too piecemealed. I am fine with every single one of those things, the visitor parking pass, the smoke parking lot. I don't really know how seventy-two-hour parking at Cooper and Eighth really affect anything, but fifty-dollar per permit fee is one of those things that, yeah, makes a lot of sense for people's time to issue those permits, because there is administrative burden to doing that, to regulating parking in downtown. But I don't know that it shouldn't be two-hundred-and-fifty. I don't know that it should be five dollars. I just don't know, and I think that we are going to have a study. I would like to put forth that we would have a study that would address what the appropriate amount is, where those people should go, what role our parking ramp does play in these things. And so, for that reason, I won't support Todd's motion, but I would support a motion of everything other than that fifty-dollar per permit, and I would be very open, after we get some studies, a study and some data about what this should look like, maybe Clark Anderson could help us out, to reexamine downtown parking fees, whether it be permits, resident permits, employer permits, or just plain parking. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, I'm going to support the motion, simply because it is a piecemeal approach. And, but, I mean, you've got to start somewhere and move forward. But I also support the idea that at some point, we need a comprehensive plan, whether that's another consultant report on top of another consultant report, on top of another consultant report. You know, I don't have great affection for, you know, this sort of tower of pisa that we're building. But I do know that at some point, driverless cars are going to have a big impact, and maybe not during our time on the council, but science says by the year 2030, you won't be able to buy a car with a steering wheel, and you'll be able to send your car somewhere and have it come back and get you, which, you know, may be a game changer. But for tonight, and I'm going to support the motion, but I'm wondering, what is our rollout here in terms of communication? I mean, there's about twelve bullet points within this plan, and this isn't going to happen by osmosis. So, are we going to distribute this through the community? And Terry, will you be delivering each one of these in a hand, sort of a hand-delivery mode?
I volunteer for the wonderful job of notifying the residential passholders about the changes. We're hoping to do that both by contacting them by phone. We keep contact information, mailing them to the addresses that the permits are addressed to now, carrying over their current permits until their normal one-year cycle of expiration, but notifying them that within thirty days of notification, the visitor passes will be essentially null and void, if you will, and that the other parts of the regulation changes will go into effect more immediately, probably the thirty days after we begin, after you approve, and then we'll start the notification, and we'll give it a thirty-day initiative to initiate those things.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley.
I just had another question in my notes here. Another piece of this was, and it's something that I wasn't quite expecting, because we hadn't discussed it when we discussed this residential permitting. But there was the addition then of a permit that was added for contractor parking downtown, for when contractors are doing work in the downtown area. It sounds like they can get a permit to park with unlimited times for up to thirty days. Is that, that's part of this changes?
The police chief went over that, not at the work session, but at our last evening meeting. I think we've had these, and he can speak for himself too, but we've had these written. We're just pulling it into this format.
Okay. So, I just had a question. Will they have the fifty-dollar administrative fee to issue a permit? And it does say that for projects for the length of time up to the thirty days, that they may have to show that they have a building permit downtown. I think that that should be that they shall have to show that they have a permit, building permit downtown. Just my comments there. Will they be, I didn't see a fifty-dollar permit fee for a contractor permit.
We haven't contemplated it with that, because they're pretty irregular, and part of the reason for the may is that we've also done it with, like, fairly short-term maintenance needs, someone coming in to service HVAC at one of the restaurants, or do the hood cleaning and things like that, that has access issues. It may be a day. It may be half a day. They need to have their equipment, their vehicle, their tools.
And I understand the need for it. It makes sense.
So, they may not have a building permit, so we kind of left it with the may. Those are typically are longer-term, and they're pretty few and far between over the course of a year. So, we hadn't contemplated the fee just because of that being a, basically, a four or an eight-hour lock that someone would need to do a process down there, whereas if it's a renovation of one of the buildings or a total facelift on it, that's an ongoing construction thing, and that we would be looking to make sure that there was a permit issued.
Right.
Thanks, Steve.
You know, I don't live or die by this fifty bucks.
I am.
Okay. You know, it just seems like it's reasonable that if I have to pay thirty-five dollars for my chicken in my backyard, that requires no work from the city, except for issuing the permit, that Terry deserved fifty for monitoring all these, for issuing the permits, for sending out the renewals. But, you know, the reality is, there's, we're sitting up here debating over fifty permits citywide. It's twenty-five hundred dollars total, which won't buy a light bar on top of one of your cars. So, the bigger picture is...
And at seven-thirty, and we're still on the consent agenda.
So, Steve, would you support the motion that Jonathan and I have discussed, which basically says, pass this without the fifty bucks?
You can call the vote.
Yeah.
I think we have to call the vote.
Yeah. Jonathan?
Let's just call the vote. Sorry.
Okay, let's call the vote.
Engraham, no. Goldes, no. Davis, yes. Gamble, yes. Leahy, yes. Voorhees, yes. Cap, no. Motion passes.
All right. Moving on. Thompson Divide.
Now, there's an issue.
City Council staff, my name is Mike Pritchard. I've had the pleasure of speaking to many of you in the past, given my role with the Roaring Fork Mountain Bike Association, and I do look forward to returning to these chambers one day soon, so we can review our partnership efforts that have resulted in the completion of the Grand Staff Trail in 2017, and Phase One of the South Canyon Trails just last fall. But today, I have my Thompson Divide Coalition hat on. I've been supportive since the earliest days of the Coalition's efforts, and currently, I serve as the board's treasurer. We have an opportunity in front of us that relates directly to the Thompson Divide Coalition's mission, which is to secure permanent protection from oil and gas development of federal lands in the Thompson Divide area. This includes Thompson Creek and Four Mile Creek watersheds. Senator Bennett and Representative Nagus have recently introduced the Cor Act in the House and the Senate. Importantly, this Colorado Outdoor Recreation and Economy Act includes the Thompson Divide Withdrawal and Protection Act. I and others here today ask that City Council clearly reiterate the past support for the Thompson Divide Coalition's mission and the permanent protection of this special place. In your packet, you'll find three prior resolutions and letters detailing the City Council's past support. The Coalition has been successful in prior years, given the broad base of support from ranchers, hunters, anglers, campers, climbers, snowmobilers, dirt bikers, and, yes, mountain bikers, among many others. While mountain bikers certainly appreciate having high-quality single track close to home, we also seek out the wild and remote backcountry experiences that can be found in the Thompson Divide. The proposed legislation has been developed over the years, and can be characterized as a compromise that meets the needs of many. The withdrawals do not impact private lands, nor valid existing leases. One of the two companies that retains leasing rights in the area has even stated support for this legislation. The second company requested and received an option within the bill to exchange existing leases for credits that could be used to bid on new leases elsewhere. Development in the Thompson Divide area is not a game-changer for Colorado's oil and gas industry, but development in the area could seriously impact the rich and vibrant rural economies built around existing uses in the Thompson Divide. So, thank you for voting affirmatively today to send the proposed letter to the attention of Senators Bennett and Gardner, and Representatives Tipton and Nagus. The support of Glenwood Springs today will play an important role in pushing this legislation forward, securing protection for this landscape for current and future generations. So, thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions for Mike?
No.
All right. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on this item?
Well, I thought so, too.
Just give us your name and address, and try and limit your comments to three minutes, if you could.
Yes, sir. My name is Dawn Randolph. I live at 261 County Road 132. I came here tonight with my husband and my fifteen-year-old son. We've only lived here three years, but we value the outdoors. We value the opportunity to go outside and experience nature. My husband's a Colorado native. I'm an Arizona native, and open space is invaluable. We lived in North Carolina, and it took us three hours to get to open space, to rock climb, to hike, to mountain bike, to camp, and we don't have that here. I can drive to Carbondale, a little bit further out, go to Thompson Creek, hike with my mother-in-law, camp with my son, rock climb on my anniversary with my husband. All of this is because we live in this environment, not because we don't choose to. We pay to live in the ambiance of the Roaring Fork Valley. My rent proves it. It's important that we protect these places. It's important that we utilize the space so that our youth connect with nature, that we share this value with people who are in their senior years, like my mother-in-law, and to give us opportunities to remember why we live in this environment, why we choose this community, and what is important as humans, that we stay connected to one another and to what's around us. Please support this letter. Please show that the Thompson Divide area should stay protected for me, for my son, for your children and grandchildren, and for anybody else who chooses the Roaring Fork Valley to visit, to live, or to do business. If we don't have these places and these spaces, why are we here? Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this?
I'm Richard Volteros, Seventy-Five South Third Street in Carbondale, and constituents of this town, Carbondale, Garfield County, have worked for ten years to secure an area that is quite unique in Colorado, and kept it from the awful affront of a very dirty industry. We all know oil and gas is a dirty industry. So, our land, our water, and our air, and our citizens were at jeopardy had this not taken place. It's really a joyful thing to understand that the citizens can get together and affect public policy in the face of a very, very strong industry, an industry that has undue influence on Colorado. We saw what happened with Proposition 112. The industry placed over forty million dollars in advertising to influence that election, and by golly, they did, against the grassroots that raised, I understand, less than a million dollars. So, we're under some pressure to keep our beautiful state intact. We are a headwater state. We send water all over this country, and those people are depending on, just as we do, clean water, essential for human life. I encourage you and applaud you for writing a letter in support of the Thompson Divide.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Dean Moffitt, 326 Second Street. This is the end of a long journey for the Thompson Divide. I was shocked when the Garfield County Commissioners voted against this. I want to point out that Commissioner Jankowski did not win reelection in his district. to point out that Commissioner Jankowski did not win reelection in his district. It took oil and gas for him to get reelected. We cannot live compatibly jointly with oil and gas development in the North Thompson, or the whole area for that matter. And we have plenty of oil and gas, and hopefully, we won't need it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Hi. Paula Stepp, 805 Crestwood in Glenwood Springs. I just spent the day in an energy symposium. I spent a couple hours here this morning, listening to energy proposals for providing energy for the city of Glenwood. And what I'm hearing is, we're heading towards renewables. We've spent a long time, at least, the Thompson Divide Coalition, really working hard to protect a certain part of our state. And I was super proud to be part of this community that said, "We can do this, and we can protect this for twenty years." I was there when the Wilderness Workshop was celebrating in Carbondale, at having paid for and taking care of leases, so that we did something fairly with the oil and gas companies. And I would just like to encourage you all to think about how important this area is to our state, and to your constituents, and to other constituents in this county, and really consider carefully about supporting what Bennett and, Senator Bennett and others are trying to do by protecting this area for a much longer time. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hello. My name is Judy Fox Perry. I live at Water Gap Ranch in Carbondale, Colorado. I've been on the Thompson Divide Coalition Board of Directors for over ten years now. And it's been a long road to get to this point. We've worked hard. We started out small. We've, you know, worked with every local and state government from, you know, from the very bottom, all the way up to the Governor of Colorado, and then taking it to the federal level now, is a big step for us. Our mission, from the very beginning, was to get permanent protection for the federal lands in the Thompson Divide area. And it's only the federal lands. We're not taking away any private property rights, and we're absolutely considering the rights of the existing valid leaseholders as private property and to be honored. And we've done that. We've gone through a lot of steps. We've seen a lot of changes in the Divide, in the number of leaseholders, and in the, in the community appreciation for the Thompson Divide. We did a water quality study that started, oh, that was six or eight years ago, proving that we have just excellent, healthy, clear, clean water in the Thompson Divide as a baseline water quality. We did an economic study to prove how much sustainable economic industry goes on up there, between the grazing, between the hunting, between all the recreational aspects that are used in the 200,000 acres of the Thompson Divide. We really appreciate what the White River National Forest did with not putting the Thompson Divide up for new lease options for twenty years in their management plan. We're thrilled that the BLM also collaborated with that, and then canceled eighteen leases, what was that, three or four years ago? And those leaseholders were compensated as they relinquished their leases. So, everybody was made whole. And so, that has been our goal and our mission so far. But it's, we haven't accomplished the permanent protection that we have in our original mission statement. You know, from day one, that was, we wanted to wrap this up and make it whole, and preserve it for generations to come. Thompson Divide is just this little chalkstone, right in this mid-elevation habitat. It's not the glorious rock and ice that we see in the wilderness areas, but its habitat, its clean water, its recreation, its unspoiled, it's, you know, it's had all these other logging industry and uses that have made it sustainable, but are, but hasn't spoiled the area, such as having to put new roads in for drilling, and the heavy truck traffic that would come with it, and the fracking, and all the, all the industry activities that would spoil the natural, the natural beauty of the area. So, we've worked hard. We would appreciate your support tonight on the Thompson Divide. It will go to the Congress level, and hopefully, we'll get a decision from them. So, thank you very much for having us here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments? All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to Council for discussion and/or motion. Shelley?
I would like to make a motion. I feel that this is, without a doubt, the right thing to do, and the right thing for Glenwood Springs to support the protection of these valuable lands, and this habitat ecosystem, and the waters up there. Not to mention that any, any natural resource extraction up there in oil and gas will likely definitely have impacts on our roads, and coming right down our main street. So, but even more important than that, I support just the protection of the wildlife habitat, and the protection of the roadless areas. So, I would propose that we support a letter of support for the Colorado Outdoor Recreation and Economy Act.
A second then.
Everybody's teeth up. We have a motion, motion by Shelley, and a second by...
Who's he asking for, everybody?
I was gonna say, seconded by everyone, so can we...
Rick, do you still want to say something?
Nope. I want to vote.
Okay. I'm getting rid of everyone's flashing buttons, and let's go ahead and call the vote.
Ingraham, yes. Goldish, yes. Davis, yes. Gamba, yes. Leahy, yes. Voorhees, yes. Cap, yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Long speech I wanted to give.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you to the Thompson Divide.
Seven years ago.
Really?
Thanks, you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
That was nice.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Yeah.
All right.
That was nice.
Yeah. Yeah, if you all could take your conversations out in the hall, we'd appreciate it. We got a few more items on our agenda. All right. So, approval of Seventh Street Construction Management for Boundaries Unlimited.
Good evening, Council. Terry was going to present this, but she had a family emergency, so I'm kind of taking it over real quick. Really familiar with the conversation, so it's not too big a deal. Obviously, we need to ask some construction management efforts downtown on Seventh Street during construction. Engineering will be taking part of that. Public Works will be taking part of that. Water, wastewater, will all be down there, but we need a codified engineer. An engineer of record is a good one to have, to have down there on site during the day, taking the field notes, making sure that's being built per his plans, Shannon's wishes, and, to be honest with you, Leslie's wishes at the same time. So, the change order itself includes four different things. One is a change, number one is change order, number one, plan revisions to include those additions from slope and hatch down to Colorado. Those plans were never really created. It was just kind of a blob that we all thought was a good idea to move forward with, improving that area. So, Derek is actually going to create those and get final drawings for Gould, to be able to move forward with, put some final pricing on. Construction Observations, obviously, he'll be down there on a daily basis from February all the way through mid-July is the heavy times. And as you can read in your packet, what he's going to be accomplishing during those. Public Outreach is kind of a big one, having that bi-weekly public meeting. Derek will be running those things. Derek will be answering questions at those. It is a good time for the public and the businesses to come meet with the contractor, the city, and Derek, who's going to be mainly in charge of the construction observations. And at the end of the day, the record drawings will be prepared for the construction project in CAD, so that we have a final record of where everything went, and elevation-wise. So, I believe we would like to have this construction observations proposal approved. Questions, comments?
And I didn't see any mention in there about the public restroom that's kind of tied into that west end of that project. But Derek's very involved in that currently, and I would hope that we wouldn't be hit with a change order down the road for his also working on making those connections and doing that.
So, all of those connections themselves are already part of the Seventh Street plans, the sewer, the waters there already. We're looking at the loading for the electrical. I asked Derek today for load calc on that building, to make sure we can pull enough breakers over there through the system we currently have. I also asked him if the hot water heater is going to be gas, or if that's electric. You know, we need to figure out the little minutia pieces to make sure that everything is pulled in at the right time. So, and there's a little stormwater system that probably needs to be, well, there is a stormwater system that needs to be improved in that area, and I don't know if he's going to do that, or if engineering is going to create that plan set. I've already kind of roughly laid out what it should look like, but we need to do some actual stormwater improvements prior to that building going in, because that is where, as you know, all the stormwater goes to, off of that parking lot. So, we would be flooding our own bathrooms.
And there's a footing and stem wall that has to be designed and built as well.
Correct.
It just seems like it would make sense to just roll that all up into a package.
And we can have that discussion with Derek. Like I said, I was trying to start some of those discussions today. I did not get a response from him. I'm sure he's busy. But we need to make sure that his DDA project is either incorporating everything that needs to be occurring with that bathroom, or if we need to roll it into this, if he can do that within this budget, or if there's a small addition to this at that point.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Rick?
No, just a comment. I'm very impressed that it's only 5.5% of the total budget to get construction management. Thank you for whatever you did to get it at that price point.
There'll be a separate contract later as well.
For Shannon?
So, this will not be the end of it.
That'll be for, we haven't even bid the landscaping though, so that will be...
I think she's part of this as well, but we're still sorting out details with her.
Correct. Thank you for noting that.
While we're on that topic, any knowledge of when the landscaping and water feature bid packages will go out?
I do not.
We are waiting for that information from Derek and Shannon to come to us. They have given us the, what we need to put together a bid packaging for the furnishings part of that, and we're going to get that out.
Can we withhold this until we get that? I'm kidding. I'd really like to see that bid package go out. Shelley?
I just had a question on the, because I know we already bid, we already let the contract for the construction and the sewer line replacement. So, did that not, that didn't have a piece in it for any construction management? Because I noticed in here, like, there's observation of the sanitary sewer installation, and I guess I was thinking that would have been in that previous contract.
We don't usually let the contractor hire their own construction management. We like to do that ourselves, and sometimes survey and soils testing, just so we know that we've got a kind of bipartisan, no outside influences associated with those contracts. That's why we hire construction management ourselves.
That makes good sense. Will this, this is a question for you, Debra, since some of this does involve the sanitary sewer installation and utility installation, observation and testing for that, will some of this come out of the wastewater, the Utility Enterprise Fund, or...
We have a, we have a $400,000 DOLA grant, which obviously, we're going to use for the construction of the sanitary sewer.
Right.
So, I think anything above and beyond that will have to come out of wastewater. I don't believe we're, I don't believe we're anticipating paying for this out of water and wastewater. We're anticipating ANI.
Out of ANI. Okay.
Water and wastewater are also struggling.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close it to the public and bring it back to the Council for any, for discussion and/or motion. Mr. Leahy?
I would move to approve the construction managed services contract with Boundaries Unlimited, and then not to exceed amount of $125,000.
Second. A motion by Todd, and a second by Rick, to approve the construction management for Boundaries Unlimited, and amount not to exceed $125,000. Any further discussion? Let's call the question.
Ingraham, yes. Goldish, yes. Davis, yes. Gamba, yes. Leahy, yes. Voorhees, yes. Cap, yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Next item, ordinance number seven, series of 2019, vacating a utilitiesment on 3116 South Grand Avenue.
I'm assuming that everybody knows it's not, the sign of the result will be, really green. This is a housing issue. We vacated this portion of the easement in 1988. That ordinance had a thirty-day restriction on it. The easement did not get recorded within thirty days. It's out, pinged out. So, we are doing it again. We're also vacating the easements that we got here. We just have already a pole line, and we're going to come around with regen courses and help the South Grand Avenue. So, there will be two easements expanded to the city with that installation. We vacate this, and we'll vacate that.
Thanks. Any questions for Robin? All right. Thanks, Robin. Any questions from in the public on this item? Seeing none, I'll close it to the public and bring it back to Council for discussion and/or motion. Mr. Godis?
Mr. Godis, I will move to pass ordinance seven, series of 2019, and ordinance of city of Glenwood Springs, vacating a utility easement located on 3116 South Grand Avenue.
A second.
A motion by Jonathan, and a second by Shelley, to approve ordinance number seven, series of 2019, vacating a utility easement on 3116 South Grand Avenue. Any further discussion? Let's call the question.
Ingraham, yes. Goldish, yes. Davis, yes. Gamba, yes. Leahy, yes. Voorhees, yes. Cap, yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item, Hanging Lake Professional Services Agreement with H2O Ventures.
Okay, I'm going to start off, then hand it to Carl, and then hand it over to Erin. The Forest Service approached us last year with the idea of a partnership to provide the Hanging Lake Shuttle Service. We agreed this partnership was important to protect both Hanging Lake, and also to ensure that visitors to Hanging Lake visited Glenwood Springs, since it's an integral part of our economy. The Forest Service has been working for many years, I think about eight...
That's right.
...to come up with a management plan that would provide high-quality access to Hanging Lake, while also limiting overall access to protect the fragile ecosystem. The Forest Service ended up with a limit of 615 visitors a day through a shuttle service, and of which 5% was to be dedicated to cycling. The city approved an agreement with the Forest Service to provide the shuttle service. Late last, or last year, we then released a competitive RFQ, based upon the contract the city has with the Forest Service, and the management plan for Hanging Lake written by the Forest Service. The steering group that helped us select our chosen vendor consisted of city staff, the Forest Service, and our tourism department. H2O was selected as the most qualified respondent, and staff began negotiations with H2O, with the continued input of the Forest Service and the tourism department. Carl's now going to go over the main details, your points of the agreement, and then we'll have Erin talk as well.
Great. Thank you. Forgot about, pushed the button. So, in your packet, you have a fairly detailed memo from my office. It hits most of the high points, but I figured for the public's benefit, I'd walk through that. I think from, from our standpoint, from legal standpoint, as Anna and I worked on this, you know, the cornerstone of this agreement is that there was a decision made by the Forest Service that there would be 615 visitors to Hanging Lake a day. So, the question of whether or not, more than that, the question of all kinds of things, whether it should be an unlimited resources, all of those questions have been answered by the Forest Service. So, we were operating inside of those parameters that we'd agreed we'd figure out a way to provide a shuttle service, and that it was limited to 1,615 visitors per day. And the goal being to spread those out over the course of the day, so that you don't have a huge, you don't want all 615...
of the day, so that you don't have a huge, you don't want all 615 on the trail at one time. That's, that was also one of the goals to, that we were trying to achieve. Obviously, we went through an RFQ process, entered an RFP process, selected H2O and began negotiating. So, here's the highlights. H2O will be providing during peak season a shuttle service, starting about 6:45 in the morning, running to 8:00 p.m. at night, May 1 through October 31st. They're limited to that 615 visitors per day. Ticket sales, H2O is going to be responsible for handling those ticket sales, whether in person at the, what will be the Welcome Center, utilizing our area at the community center where the ice rink is that doesn't have ice on it during the summer, which is kind of a nice use of that space to get something out of it, because I know Todd has been thinking about that for a long time. So, ticket sales, tickets will be $12. And there's going to be kind of a pre-sale for bikers and hikers at $9.50 during the month of April for preseason. And then, once those, once that has gone by, then all tickets will be $12. During the off-season, self-drive tickets to the Hanging Lake area will be $10. It's gonna be an online reservation system where you'll be able to log in, book those tickets online, get all the information you need. What's kind of cool about that is the way that's being done, that actual landing page for that reservation widget will be on Visit Glenwood, Visit Glenwood Springs. But the link into that, that button can be put on any website anywhere, and so that's really a great thing, because it gives the opportunity to spread that sort of far and wide, but it'll always link you into that reservation page. H2O is responsible for responding to customer questions and complaints regarding the services. They're also providing staffing, and they are responsible for cleaning the Hanging Lake rest area and restrooms, which I know CDOC is super excited about. Compensation to the city, annual rent for the use of the ice rink is $30,000 a year, plus 10% of all taxable sales of goods and services at the Welcome Center that'll be set up there. Additionally, 10% of any advertising sold inside the shuttles will go to the city, and then H2O will pay to the city and the Forest Service partnership 5% of ticket sales. And that's really money that we're gonna work with the Forest Service on how best to reinvest that back into, into the service over the course of the next few years. The agreement is for, it's a five-year commitment. One of the important components of that, though, is that both our contract with the Forest Service as well as ours with H2O is to really look at the end of that peak season, what worked, what didn't work, what do we need to add on, what do we need to change. We view this as year one, trying to get it out of the gate. There may be a lot of things that we can do down the road that are interesting or would be great ideas, or whatever those might be, but, you know, this is, we're doing something brand new that's not been tested in this market. We really don't know how it's gonna go, so we're trying to make sure we provide those core services. Ownership of, really, the intellectual property that's developed out of this stays with the city. And I touched on online reservations. So, those are the kind of the high points of the contract with H2O. I have to say that all of the partners in this have been great to work with, from our standpoint, from legal standpoint, whether it's the Forest Service, whether it's H2O, whether it's working with the Tourism Board and getting their input on what's going on, even the rest of the community. So, I really wanna thank everybody that's been involved in that.
I'll turn that over to Erin.
Thank you. Good evening. Erin Mayville, I'm the District Ranger on the Eagle Holy Cross Ranger District for the White River National Forest. Not the first time I've been here to talk to you about this very thing. I was thinking about it. I mean, I think I lost track, actually, how many times we've been here talking about it, which is what makes tonight so exciting. They had the hard part of the presentation, I'll say that up top. I get the easy part. Some thanks, and then just to kind of give a little context from the Forest Service perspective. Deborah said it, 2011 is when we first started gelling around the idea of doing something down at Hanging Lake, overcrowding issues, backing up parking on the interstate, you name it. And it's culminated in where we are here today. There's a few more steps ahead of us, which we can talk about in a minute, but this is a big milestone. That stakeholder group was pulled together. We worked really hard to get where we are today. I agree, the partnerships worked wonderfully. And not just to get where we are today, but the partnership we've had with the city, whether it's for, you know, bringing on Rangers to manage things in the interim, or getting to a little bit more permanent step here today. I've talked to you about it before, but I do wanna just highlight, you know, we put out our management plan last year. It had four components, 615 people per day, as had been mentioned, a daily capacity, a shuttle service, a reservation service to help manage that capacity. And then the fourth component is the adaptive management component. Those were the sideboards that we, the Forest Service, kind of put together, built that into an agreement with the city that was signed last year, which is a major milestone and just a great step forward. I'll also point out that it's different. You know, we've been doing this for quite some time, several years, and we've looked all across the country, and we haven't seen anything quite like this, to be honest, where the Forest Service has partnered with the local municipality, and then we've gone on the next step with a, with a local contractor. Ticks all the right boxes, I think, for us, and with that management plan, the spirit of that management plan. So, just excited to be here. Thank you very much for the support, you know, all the way through this whole thing. We're very happy with where things are today. And we're here to answer some questions and, and whatever you need.
Thanks, Erin. Any questions for Erin?
I do have a question. So, I got a call from someone today at my ward, and they were concerned about their, like, the other biking companies and how people get to bike up there, and whether or not they, how they get their tickets to Hanging Lake, if they want to bike on their own, or if they wanna bike up to Hanging Lake through a separate company maybe than this. And I, I realized, okay, I just, I wanted to get the question out there so that they could hear the answer. I wasn't...
It's really part of our contract with H2O.
Say that again.
It's really part of our contract with H2O.
Yeah.
The numbers of visitors are set.
Okay.
It has to be 615. So, whomever is biking or hiking up there has to buy the same ticket, let's say, as anyone else. So...
Is it first come, first served?
There will be a reservation system.
Okay.
And you can go online and purchase a ticket. That reservation system will sit on Visit Glenwood's website. It will be, I believe, live April 1st, and I think you can get tickets, and I could be slightly wrong on this, like, up to 60 days, 90 days ahead of time. I don't know. But, so you can get them ahead of time, but not months and months and months ahead of time. So, first come, first served, as much as you have to go on and purchase an individual ticket.
So, if you're, I mean, I understand we gotta have someone who's driving the vans and stuff. So, that's, that's set, that's what it is. We've got a van company who's gonna shuttle people. But if you were a biking company, that say you had 10 people that were gonna call your company and say, "I wanna ride 10 bikes," and we'd like to all go and ride to Hanging Lake together and go and hike the trail and come back, can that company buy 10 tickets that day?
That company will be able to go ahead and buy 10 tickets, but they have to buy them at scheduled times, because it was important for the Forest Service not only to have that 615-person cap, but have it spread throughout the day. So, if you didn't have to go and individually get a time almost, which a company can do, I think up to 20 online, after that you'll have to call in, then we wouldn't be able to control, you know, 300 people showing up at one time at the most desirable time and ruining the overall experience.
Okay. I get it. I was just, you know, it just seems like, I know this is gonna be a change, and people are gonna have some heartache over it, but it's, I think, something that the, I think we're doing it as best as we can, and then we'll see if any tweaks need to be made later on down the road.
It is an adaptive partnership with the Forest Service and with H2O as well. So, we will sit down and try to figure out how to improve it as it goes on, and we know it's gonna be a little rocky in the beginning, as Erin said. No one's done this. So, we don't have a book. We can just open up and say, "This is how you should do it." But, you know, I think we're all committed to learn and work with each other and try to make it better.
And be fair with all the other entities in town who may have a business that, that puts people up at Hanging Lake through biking or hiking or whatever they do.
Every, all biking companies will be treated the same. They all have to pay $12 for anyone to hike up once they get to Hanging Lake. The path is free, as it always was. It's just unfortunately, when you put a cap on a resource that has not had a cap, and you do a competitive RFQ, there are results.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Shelley?
I have a question for you, Erin. Can you just remind us, I can't remember the exact numbers, but what were some of the peak numbers you were seeing on, per day in the summer?
1,200. 1,200 people per day. That's, that's, that's the typical high, high point that we'd see. So, 615 is obviously a reduction.
Right. But that's what was determined to be a number that could sustain the quality of...
That's right. So, during those, those eight years, right, what we've been doing is stakeholder group, capacity studies, visitor surveys, data collection of all kinds, right? And, and that was one of them. Or that was one of the results, basically, from all that data collection, was 615 people per day got us right to where the trail crowding was reduced. To a certain level, you know, you have fewer passings along the trail. What we were dealing with was trail widening, right? So, if you have four people bunched up, they go around one another, et cetera. We did visual simulation surveys and asked people, like, actually computer simulated things, said, "All right, which looks best to you?" And it showed the lake with, you know, five people at it, two people at it, 50 people at it, you know, in between. It was actually phenomenal amount of data gathering. And that's, all that kind of went into that 615 number. And what really we're trying to balance there is the economic potential and the economic viability, the environmental viability of the lake, right, and to keep that going. And then, lastly, the visitor experience. So, 1,200 was the peak that we, that we see down there. Not every day, of course, gets 1,200 people. That would be, you know, 4th of July weekend on a Saturday kind of thing.
Right.
So, 615 doesn't, it's not the full number, right? That's the average kind of cap throughout this, throughout the season.
Okay.
That's how we got there.
Okay. I appreciate that. But, and it is a, it is a big drop, but I also appreciate the opportunity for the city to be part of this partnership. And I know all the work that's gone into it, from staff, the Forest Service, you know, you have the shutdown in the middle up there, so the negotiations kind of got delayed a little bit. And there was a lot going on. But, working with our tourism board and putting out a competitive RFQ, I just wanna say thanks to everyone. This is gonna be a work-in process. But I'm really impressed with where we are right now, and I'm excited to see, see how it plays out.
Thank you.
So, thanks.
Jonathan?
And just to that limit, I believe I saw some numbers, and correct me if I'm wrong, I know that 1,200 person is, yeah, Saturday and 4th of July weekend. But I believe I saw that July was the only month where the numbers were actually, on average, above that 615. I believe. So, correct me if I'm wrong, you probably know those numbers by heart, but I remember, like, June and August being like, average daily total being like 500-ish, and then like September and May being like 300. So, it's not this drop-off where every day 1,200 people are going. And I guess I may ask a question I've answered for you, so go ahead.
No, you, you've, you've got it. And it's a, it's kind of a hard thing to articulate specifically, but you did it well. It's that, of course, July is, that's the peak month, right? And it kind of just tapers from there. Again, that's why 615 kind of represented a good average number, okay? We, we don't expect December, for instance, even though there's 615 people per day. We don't, we've never seen that many people on a day in December. So, that represents a nice average and a nice buffer. This is where, the other, I think I'll just note it, I'll note, I've said it, Deborah mentioned it too, the adaptive management component of this. It's, it's, it's why we're really proud of this, frankly. We've built in indicators and monitoring throughout the whole plan that if 615 is not the right number, if it needs to be 600, if it needs to be 700, whatever, you know, we have the ability to kind of flex and see that. So, 615 is our best, best number that we've pulled from the data collection, and we'll kind of see how it goes from there. We needed something, though, for A, to plan to, and then B, for the economic viability, you know, of the next step. But, right, July's the busiest month.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Erin, I have a quick question for you. The, I know that your organization doesn't have all the money you need to do everything you ever wanna do with everything that you manage. And as you mentioned, the trail and the lake have seen some pretty significant abuse over these last three or four years, five years, 10 years, however long it's been, since we've been seeing these kinds of numbers. Will the funds that get returned to the Forest Service and the city at the end of the peak season, will those be able to be used, at least in part, for rehabilitation of portions of the trail and the lake, and, or is it gonna be more other, you know, hiring a ranger, which is also important? I'm, you know, I'm just curious.
Right. So, short answer is yes. That's, that's the short answer. We're, we're in the process of building our, our operating plan for this coming summer and really articulating, like, specifics around rehabilitation efforts. We've done these in the past. We do volunteer days there. We have our trail crew go down. We have our, our Hanging Lake Ranger crews. They, you know, they clean graffiti and pick up trash and whatnot. I think this will be built into the operating plan we're building now, and we'll have a really good sense of it come the end of this summer. But the short answer is, is yes, absolutely. And, and then the only other thing I'll say on that is, you know, hiring Rangers and having, having presence on site, we, we actually talked about this in a little different context, goes so, so far with just responsible visitation. And we're, we're hopeful that reducing the numbers the way we are, managing it with H2O Ventures and this, this kind of management plan we've got together, we'll actually see less graffiti, we'll see less trail widening. So, not only will we be able to reinvest some money in rehabilitation efforts, we're actually gonna just stem the tide of it and kind of get ahead of it. And I don't think enough can be said about that. That's, we're looking, we're excited about that, so.
Great. Can I open this up to the public yet? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Sir?
Mayor and council, city staff, thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Patrick Drake, and I live at 1721 Bennett Avenue. I've been a lifetime local in Glenwood Springs. If I can give you a little bit of background, a little bit of history, be very transparent, I obviously am one of the companies that submitted an RFQ as well. Most of that was because of our existing businesses. So, in 2007, I became owners of Blue Sky Adventures with my business partner, Jeffrey Olson. Blue Sky was founded in Glenwood Springs in 1975 by Gary Hansen and Chuck Lancy, two very longtime locals. In 2012, we were able to become the owners of Canyon Bikes as well. And Canyon Bikes essentially is what you're speaking of, a bike rental and shuttle company. We transport folks to the east end of the Glenwood Canyon. Canyon Bikes was started, formed in 1992 by Joe O'Donnell, former city council member and longtime local. By all accounts, Jeff and I have run Blue Sky Adventures and Canyon Bikes successfully over the years. I would say one of the, we're proud of one significant, or several things, our impeccable safety record, I think stands out. Our focus on customer service is, is very high. And then ultimately, our relationship with primarily our staff, a good number of folks here, and also other city, you know, business owners within the community, the Forest Service, we have a wonderful relationship. And being able to have, build relationships with our, with our visitors. I truly have a deep desire to continue that legacy, and I also feel a significant obligation to help provide a business for our employees. I do have concerns as I stand here. The Hanging Lake Shuttle Service and more specifically, elements of the contract have a direct and significant impact on our business. And I'd like to tell you a little bit more why. The cost, I'm happy to answer questions, but the $9.50, the $9.50 cost is very challenging for us to be able to operate our business. That's nearly a 2,000 times greater cost, or 2,000 percent greater cost than essentially the provider's able to provide out. If you don't mind, and I do apologize, it's gonna be about one or two more minutes. Basically, our business shuttles folks to the east end of the canyon. About 50% of our customers, I've said 30 to 60%, I'd say it's closer to probably 50% of our customers use our service as a way to get to Hanging Lake. We employ 45 to 55 employees between our two businesses, and we have operated legally with a PUC for over... And we have operated legally with a PUC for over twenty years. Um, in Glenwood Springs, there basically are two other companies that offer a similar service, that's Glenwood Adventure Company and Sunlight Ski and Bike. Uh, regarding the Hanging Lake Shuttle Service and this current process, I would like to make a few things very clear. Um, I fully support the US Forest Service and the city of Glenwood Springs and their involvement in the implementation of this plan and the shuttle service. I believe that a paid and capped visitor, uh, structure is necessary and that the protection of the resource is paramount, as well as the visitor experience. In principle, I do support the city of Glenwood Springs and their selection of H2O Ventures as the shuttle provider. Uh, simultaneously, and equally important, I believe that a, in a free market, and I believe that competition ultimately provides for a better product and better offerings. During this process, I have asked for equality, um, equality in consideration, equality in pricing, and equality in availability. Uh, I believe that the Hanging Lake Shuttle Provider and the existing bike shuttle companies, uh, can and should be able to coexist. Um, I also feel that because of the pricing structure specifically and the additional costs that will have to be absorbed by our business, um, that equality isn't going to be very challenging, so therefore making coexistence. I do project that with that cost, uh, we, we have a potential shortened lifespan. In all honesty, I bet about two years. Over the past six ye- uh, six weeks, I have attempted to be a voice for our business and other businesses like ours, most notably Sunlight Ski and Bike. I have, this process has not been, I'd say, comfortable or easy. In fact, it's been very, um, kind of, just very uncomfortable at times. So I've attempted to engage in conversation free of fear, frustration, or assumption. And at times, I have failed. Um, I've lost far too many nights' sleep over this. Uh, but I remain committed to the process. I remain committed to the adaptive management plan. Um, and I hope that there is some adapting that can take place, uh, for Sunlight Ski and Bike and ourselves. Um, because I truly do believe that the path forward needs to be sustainable for the Hanging Lake, for the resource itself, for the Hanging Lake Shuttle Provider, for Sunlight Ski and Bike, and for ourselves, for Canyon Bikes. Certainly happy to answer questions regarding concerns, but I know time limits there. So I just very much thank you and appreciate your consideration and appreciate your understanding. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this agreement? Sheila?
Sheila Markwitz, I live at eight twenty-four Blake. Um, I am here to ask you to find a way to, I have to agree with everything that Patrick said. I hiked up Hanging Lake many, many, many times. I value it, and I know, I think this will be a good plan. The part of the plan that upsets me is the fact, how it will negatively affect Canyon Bikes and probably Sunlight, too. I worked one summer with Patrick, I know Patrick, his company is wonderful. They're a longtime community organization, and I think it would be a shame if this particular plan put them out of business. I think it's very important for the council to figure out a way, if they can, some way, and I, I don't have the answers, but some way, create some kind of a situation where they would be able to be part of the shuttle service or something where it would not so negatively affect their business. I think it's, uh, unconscionable that that might happen. And I think it's important for the council to respect the small businesses that have done so well, as Patrick's has, and Sunlight Ski and Bike, over the years. And that this plan does not negatively affect them so that they will go out of business. I think that would be awful. So, I am asking the council if they have to change anything that they're doing or make a different, uh, contract or some way so that this would not negatively affect these small businesses that have done so much for the community and brought so many tourists and, and done such a great job so negatively. So, I hope you will consider that and, um, not allow that to happen, not allow them to have it so negatively affect their business so that they will go out of business. I think that will be a great loss for the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila. Any other comments?
Good evening. My name's Robert Kadu. Um, I live at eleven thirty-seven Red Mountain Drive. Uh, I've been a, an employee for twenty years as a shuttle driver for Whitewater River Rafting and Blue Sky for five years, and Canyon Bikes. I just wanna mention one thing, if I may. In my time driving between, between Glenwood Springs and, uh, the put-ins at Shoshone, I've been approached a number of times by this comment. Why don't you ask the bus driver? And someone came up to me and said, could you take me back to Glenwood Springs? My sister has had an accident riding her bike, and we need help to get back to Glenwood Springs. And I said, of course, because our motto is to help everybody on the river or the bike path, no matter who they are or who they rented from. And just this last year, I had a gentleman say to me, could you help my us, um, my wife has fallen on the bike path, and, uh, we need to get back to Glenwood Springs? And I said, of course. So, a little, just ten minutes later, the wife came slowly, and, uh, we put the bikes on a trailer, and their two kids got in the van, and we brought them back to a different company than Blue Sky or Canyon Bike. So I just wanna mention to you at the council, that as employees, um, on the bike path, on the river, uh, there's a lot of little things that come up that we do volunteer. And I think each one of you council members know how important it is to have employees for these companies that shuttle people up and down the river to do what needs to be done, no matter what the situation. So I just wanted to point that out, that there's the little things, the intangibles, that make a difference. And that's what happens here at Glenwood Springs. It's the intangibles that people say, wow, I'm gonna tell people about my experience at Glenwood Springs, and it's just a marvelous place to come and visit, 'cause everybody treats us like family. So thanks for a few minutes to address you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this agreement? Sir?
My name's Rob Norville. Uh, I live at fifteen oh five River Bend Way, Glenwood Springs. Uh, I teach at the high school here in town, but my summer job is driving for Canyon Bikes. Just like to echo some of the sentiments some of these other commenters have made, um, and also add that Canyon Bikes and Blue Sky Ventures employs some of the, uh, high school students that I teach, and also students from other communities. And that's an opportunity that provides those students with some skills that I can't teach in my classroom. And so I think it would be a shame, uh, for the community and for those students to lose those opportunities because of, uh, the way the contract is currently written. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to comment on this agreement? Alright, seeing none, I will close it to public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and our motion. Mr. Gottes?
I'm with direct to have to move forward the agreement with H2O Ventures to operate a shuttle for the Hanging Lake Welcome Center to the Trailhead beginning in May of two thousand and nineteen.
Alright, motion by Jonathan, is there a second? I would second that. So we have a motion by Jonathan and a second by Rick to approve the professional services agreement with H2O Ventures for the Hanging Lake Shuttle.
Is it too late to ask one more question of Deborah?
Uh, I mean, I'll wait till I'm at my turn, I guess, but I just have another question.
Shelley?
I just have a couple of questions, because we, you know, we as, as council have not been involved in the contract making, and so I'm not really, and I'm not that intimately familiar with, like, the numbers of the biking traffic going up, up, um, the canyon and, but I haven't heard, so I, I understand what I'm hearing from comments, and I, and I totally get and am sympathetic to the jobs, um, question. And I've had sons that have been raft guides and, you know, working in the local economy, so I understand that. But I'm not hearing a, kind of a proposed solution, and I don't really have an idea of the scale of the impact. Like, you know, what's, what is the traffic of, um, you know, how, how many bikes a day are, would you typically be running in the summer? Can I ask that? I'm just curious to know kinda the scale, because we haven't been involved in this, and this is a big change for the community, but I'm just, I'd like to understand it a little bit better. And I'm not trying to throw a wrench in anything, but just because we haven't had this detail, it's really been left up to the Forest Service and staff, and, and it was a competitive bid that was put out. So I believe the process has been very fair. Um, and, and I believe, too, it's gonna be a learning, and it's going to be, uh, uh, something that will be tweaked along the way. The first year is our first year of experiment. But I would like to have, if we can entertain that question, just to have an idea of what this impact is. I haven't really seen numbers and-
Patrick, yeah, go ahead and-
Um, so annually, we, uh, we, our shuttle service provides, um, about four thousand five hundred riders, um, shuttle service to either Dot Zero or Bear Ranch. Um, additionally, another year, three thousand to four thousand, um, annually, ride, um, simply run from us, leave our shop, go into the canyon, and then return. Um, out of that, I have presented figures, um, saying that approximately thirty to sixty percent of our customers do end up hiking Hanging Lake. It obviously adds to the overall service very admittedly. I would say that number, uh, very accurately, and I believe other shuttle companies have reiterated this, it's likely greater than fifty percent. So fifty percent of our clientele wanna hike Hanging Lake. I, I would love to elaborate more, but, uh, you know, if, if that's-
Okay.
That is the answer to that question.
So that's in, over the, kinda the main season, which is like, May till October or something?
We open, correct.
So how many, and how many bike permits will be available under the contract?
As many as anyone wants, you just have to purchase them for the full amount.
Okay, because the last version that I heard, they were gonna be like, limited number of bike, that's the-
We, a couple of times ago, we did roll out that idea. The problem was, it wasn't working well with the limit per hour-
Right.
-that was requested. It's, you know, it's a matter of economics for the shuttle provider, just plain and simple. We ran all the numbers. If the shuttle provider does not know how many people will be riding on the shuttle, be May or, whether it's May or July-
Right.
-they will buy the wrong size bus, and it won't be fiscally sustainable. So that's why we need either someone paying to ride the shuttle at twelve dollars or someone hiking up to pay twelve dollars, because it's the model based upon six hundred and fifteen people.
So under the scenario, everybody takes, pays twelve dollars if you wanna hike Hanging Lake, whether you take the shuttle or whether you take the bike?
Yes.
But there's, and there's a set number of tickets in an hour slot, but they're available to whoever purchases them. Okay. I just wanted to understand that. Okay, thank, thank you.
Can I add on to that question? So if another company, whatever company it is, has a bus load of, or a van load of twenty people, can they not go to the community center and, or online and buy those twenty tickets for those customers? And they can do their ride and-
They will not be able to access the parking lot because the Forest Service, C-Dot is the selling foregate.
I mean, by bike.
By bike.
By bike, yeah.
Yeah. No, I know we have to have one shuttle service, I mean, we have to have one vehicle going in and out, but-
Absolutely, you can buy those, as long as they're available, you can buy those tickets, anybody can buy those tickets.
First come, first served.
First come, first served, and all those kind of slots.
Okay.
Um, we have set it up that, just so that people can't block out an entire day, that if it's gonna be over twenty tickets, you need to make a phone call to say, hey, I've got a group of sixty people.
Okay.
Because part of that, too, is managing the number of people on the trail at a time, right?
Gotcha.
So that's why that call-in, so you don't, it's kinda weird to block it.
Alright, I got you.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks. Uh, Steve?
I was, I was afraid I was next, I'm very the other white. Yeah, I don't even know what to say, Patrick. I'm, I'm really uncomfortable, uh, with, you know, where we're at. Uh, I feel like I'm in the dark. Um, I haven't, uh, I don't really understand, I think, staff and the Forest Service, I greatly appreciate the partnership that we've got going on. I'm so thankful that this isn't the, uh, gypsum Forest Service, uh, program happening and that it's here in Glenwood Springs. The word adaptive, to me, tells that we're gonna continue to evolve. And I don't know what the solution is for these, uh, companies or the people that are wanting to go by bike, and I have no idea what recommendations you may have had that maybe fell on deaf ears, or if we tried to work through it, or, or, you know, what the solution is there. Certainly isn't our intent up here, uh, to harm any, uh, business in town. But I, I feel like I'm in chains. Uh, we have to take the step forward, uh, with the Forest Service and this program. And, uh, I really, you know, would like to make the request that staff and the Forest Service continues to work together to try to figure out how to make this work for everybody. We're getting in this program to, uh, to improve conditions. And, uh, we all understand that those conditions need to be improved, but it shouldn't be at the detriment of our local, uh, economy and businesses as well. Beyond that, I, I have no idea where we're at. I'm, I'd like to take a pass on the vote, uh, 'cause I don't know whether to support it on one hand and, and wish I had more information and more answers on the other hand. I have to support it. I have to support it because, uh, it's absolutely the best thing for Hanging Lake and the best thing for this community as a whole, and the best thing for our tourists. And, but we gotta figure out how to, how to deal with these other issues as well. So, I hope we don't readdress that every other year, uh, that we can continue to hammer on this if we pass this today, and, uh, work towards some kind of better solution or greater knowledge, uh, before we get into the heat of the summer here. I don't know if that's at all possible. I don't know if that's at all possible. We're dealing with two government entities and you know the government's here to help you.
Did you have anything else?
Oh, good.
Rick?
We've had some discussion about this and Patrick and, you know, heartfelt sort of discussions about what this means when one competitor and another competitor submit RFQs and one RFQ is accepted and, you know, the others aren't. And so in every sort of decision, as we talked about, you know, there's winners and there's losers, but I'm wondering if you talk about the 950, let's say it's the month of April, it seems like the crux of what your argument is, is that if it's 950 and you have to bake that in with rental costs for the bike and transportation and all of that, your price is going to go up. And it seems like your concern is that with H2O may be able to bake it into what they would provide as a similar service, but the price point would be lower. And we don't know that, no?
No, H2O does not own a bike cycling company. Ken Murphy does, but his cycling company will have to pay the same $12 to access it. No one is being treated differently.
Okay.
It's just there's a change in access to a resource that was once free, it's no longer.
So if they're not in the cycling game, then?
And everybody, everybody, I, I can't say this any more clearly.
Just say it more clearly. Yeah, I'll say it more clearly, I apologize. I can't. Is that, everybody who accesses Hanging Lake will pay $12 unless they are a hiker or biker and in April they can buy an early ticket for 950 for their preferred date, right? Everybody will pay $12 regardless of how you get there, regardless of what company you're using. So from the standpoint of access to the resource, everybody is on an equal footing. From the standpoint that if I own a bike company and I have 20 people that I want to take out there and they want to hike Hanging Lake, they're going to have to pay $12. If it's somebody wants to ride the shuttle out, they're going to have to pay $12. There is no difference. Now, from the standpoint that it used to be a free unlimited resource that the companies could leverage as part of their business model, which is a great thing and, and we do it all the time on public lands, that's what it was, that's not what it is today. And that's what, through this entire process, we've been very clear and transparent that 615, 615 people a day, there's a limited number per hour, you're going to have to buy a ticket. It doesn't matter how you get there.
So, and the message is it's $12 for everybody.
It's $12 for everybody.
That's for every cycling company?
Every cycling company.
Any hiking companies, anybody that?
However you get there, it's $12.
And so they're going to have to bake that price into their model as well.
Everybody has to bake it into their model and, and it's equal for everybody, right? Nobody, nobody gets a better or worse deal on that, it's $12 for everybody that walks up and down that trail.
Thank you. Jim?
My, my comments are probably very similar to, to Steve's. I mean, I, I understand where to place in time with the pending season coming up that we need to get this in place. But I'm also the mind that, that I guess I would like to understand how that model works for Mr. Drake and the other companies. I understand what you're saying, Carl, and that makes sense to me, it, it seems fair. Either fair, equally unfair, whatever it is, it's an even playing field. What that actually means to the economics of the business, I don't fully understand. I'd like to better understand and then explore with staff and frankly with interested council members, brainstorm a little, is there any tweak that could be made under this adaptive concept? I, I hope frankly is that people look at this and say, you know, I used to rent a bike for X, now I rent a bike for X plus 12 bucks and that's just the way it is. That's the cost of going to Hanging Lake and so that it doesn't have a negative impact on your business. But we'll have to see and, and certainly the objective is not to see a great business like this go away by any means and that would not be acceptable to, I think, most of us up here. So, you know, we'll, we'll move forward with this agreement and stay very interested and in discussions as though, so as this rolls out, how is it impacting Blue Sky, how is it impacting others?
I think the question is, is how big is the subsidy that the city is willing to make to make?
That maybe want part of the solution.
I mean, that's, but literally what your choice will be is how big is the subsidy that you want to provide, right? I mean, that, that's the question.
Yeah, and I guess to answer that, I think we'd need to see, so how is it, how is it rolling out for, you know, this business?
They're getting recognizing that that's a taxpayer subsidy. That, I think that's, the point I'm trying to make is to say, the dollars involved in here, we're already putting money in to make the shuttle service work from the city's perspective, from the Forest Services' perspective. There's not, I mean, it's an open book, I don't know if Steve's here or not, he's run the numbers, there are not, it is not a huge moneymaker at any level. So the question is, if you're going to change the model, it's how much more money are you willing to put in?
Well, that's a conversation for another day.
Yeah, yeah, that's a conversation we need to have.
We got a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second.
I got one, I got something to say.
I think I'm ready to call the vote. I know it's a difficult vote, it's a transition for all of us. We're going from something that was free to something that's, you know, $12 to hike a trail. It's not something that us who live out, out here in the West, surrounded by a lot of open lands are used to doing. But I think it's a very important move to protect this resource, Hanging Lake, and I think we need to support it, move forward and we will look at adapting if we can come up with some good ideas that we learn over the course of this first year.
Jonathan?
So in theory, Carl, 615 tickets could be purchased in a day and they could all be bike passes, correct?
Absolutely.
So how many, Mr. Drake, how many bike, the biggest day you've ever had, how many bike tickets have you sold? Or how many bikes have you rented?
Sorry, do you mind wording that again?
On the biggest day you've ever sold, rented bikes, what, what's the biggest number of bikes you've ever rented?
We have done days over 140 individuals.
Okay, so that, that's less than 615 bikes and so between yourself, Glenwood Canyon, or Glenwood Adventure Company, Sunlight Bike and Ski, individual users, if I wanted to resign from city council and open up business where I did it, we would all be on the same footing. So it seems to me that, I'm getting very nervous here that we're talking about government picking winners and losers. And I get very nervous about that because it feels like we're being asked to pick a winner because right now it is a level playing field, it's $12 for everybody, by foot, by bike, by, by vehicle in the off-season, by shuttle. And I think when government sometimes gets involved in picking winners and losers, we screw everything up. And, and right now we have, from my understanding, a level playing field. So I'm not quite sure what we're being asked from, by Mr. Drake, but I think your problem, Mr. Drake is with a 615 and that's a Forest Service condition, not, not a City of Glenwood Springs condition.
May I, may I clarify? So my, my ultimate concern is I agree with the 615, or I agree with a cap number. In essence, I, we are essentially a very similar business, almost the exact same business. One provider is getting the tickets for 5% of the sold ticket cost and we're having to provide essentially the, the same thing for $9.50 or $12.
I don't know what that means. Sorry, I'm sorry, can you say that again? I don't know what that means. One provider is getting what?
Essentially, I've, and I've stated to everybody, I view this as a product, you know, Hanging Lake is obviously a product. It has been something that has been free in the past, I believe that it should not be free in the future. H2O Ventures is essentially the cost to them for getting those, one individual ticket is 5% being paid back to the city. So a, in essence, and I'm not involved in, in all the conversations here. But when I'm being asked to, you know, I have my own fuel costs, I have my own insurance, I have my own payroll costs. It is the significance of the $9.50 price tag or the $12 price tag for our bikers when there's, I feel that obviously there is separation in the company, but if I, if the right hand's paying the left hand in the current structure, I've had, I've had issues understanding how that price structure got put in place.
Well, then everybody has the same exact access. I don't understand this 5%, but whether it be Glenwood Canyon or?
I think I can explain the 5%. He's forgetting that H2O has to provide bus service for 615 people, whether somebody shows up for that bus or not, right? That's the difference in running that shuttle service, whether it's full or empty, it has to be there and available. There's a capital investment in that piece of it. The bicycle, you know, whatever, I can't remember which bicycle company is, any of the bicycle companies have to purchase that ticket just like anybody else has, if it's going to be that bicycle. That shuttle company running, whether there's people on that bus or not, they're required to run that shuttle, right? That's, that's the, the difference there, yeah, they're only, for running the shuttle, they're only paying this 5%. It's just that they have to run the shuttle, hire the people, do all that stuff to have that shuttle service available.
And hence the equality because I have to do the exact same thing.
You, what?
What are you asking, I get, I, I guess I'm just confused.
I would, I would, I would very much like to, counsel, I understand that the, I will admit, the greater good for the community is to pass the agenda, pass the contract as is. I fully admit and fully agree that that is best for the City of Glenwood Springs. I would, I am hopeful to engage in conversation, explain our expenses, why with that cost, I may be able to pass it off to the customer, but I believe it strikes a good price margin within the City of Glenwood Springs and that our service, the biking shuttle services within Glenwood should also be considered and included in being able to receive same equal treatment of tickets, whether that is within the 615 or entering the conversation with the Forest Service to see if that number could be increased slightly to accommodate Sunlight Ski and Bike and Canyon Bikes.
And not Glenwood Adventure Company?
And Glenwood Adventure Company.
Queen Jonathan Gotis?
And Jonathan Gotis when I resigned.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
There's a, I, I will, I will say in a different setting, I think the, the, at no, very admittedly, I believe the City of Glenwood Springs and the staff entered into conversations with the best intent. Through this process, I personally have identified very concerning things for my personal business. I feel like those concerns go to Sunlight Ski and Bike as well and could be extended to Glenwood Adventure Company and I would simply like to show how that impact will significantly impact negatively our business.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we, the question before us is, we have a motion and I forget who made it.
I did.
Jonathan and?
Rick, didn't you second it?
Yes, I did.
Seconded by Rick to approve the agreement with H2O Ventures for professional services agreement to provide shuttle services, ticket services, reservation system, cleaning of Hanging Lake area restroom, promotion, advertising, et cetera, for Hanging Lake. Any, no further discussion, it's called a question.
Thank you.
Engrim yes, Golda yes, David yes, Gampa yes, Leahy yes, Burhish yes, Karp yes, motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Can we take a break? Five, five minute break?
Yeah. Should we do that?
I'll make you bring the beer.
Okay, five minute break. Let's come back to order. Next item on the agenda is the landfill business plan.
We will involve twelve dollar day tickets. Let's see. So I just want to go through, uh, the landfill business plan. I know you probably have all read it. I know Shelley has, she has comments on it, they're great. Um, but just a quick update on what is going on right now. Uh, you guys did authorize us to lease equipment, purchase a compactor, and we're out looking at excavators right now for the composting and shredding processes that we do. Uh, equipment delivery schedule, just so you know, uh, the seven seven two Bomag that Heartland was providing from their Kansas City, uh, facility that is closing down, it should be here tomorrow morning. Um, Pico will come up early next week and do their review of it. Pico's a power equipment company that does all, will be doing all the service on that and providing the warranty, um, and then hopefully if everything goes well, we will be accepting that piece of equipment, uh, sometime mid next week. So if that doesn't go well and it's not what we were expecting, we have a backup plan, just so you know. Um, the Caterpillar bulldozer D six, uh, I believe they gave us a schedule of either April sixth or April ninth, which is a little late, they're trying to push that schedule up. Um, if not, we can always get a rental dozer for two or three weeks, uh, to train on and have on site. It's really not a big deal either, uh, D sixes are pretty easy to get. Uh, the Caterpillar nine thirty eight wheel loader is a March delivery. Um, the water truck and tandem truck, uh, that we are purchasing from the streets department, we will just be taking possession of that kind of as late as we possibly can. Uh, we do use that larger truck as one of our plow trucks, uh, so we'll kind of push that off till the end of March, uh, but early enough that we can have our guys train with it. Uh, the operators will be training for basically, they had last two weeks in March, um, I'll go over that in a minute. Um, we will be coming back to hopefully on March seventh, either in the consent agenda or discussion item, uh, with the excavator. We have found a pretty nice, uh, excavator, uh, Caterpillar three twenty. It has the, it's newer, it's kind of low hours, it's two thousand hours on it. Um, it has a large claw on it, so we can do a lot of capacity with compost instead of a smaller claw. Um, it is a hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars. We came with an estimate of one twenty five last time, um, but understanding that sixteen thousand of dollars, that is prepaid maintenance. So there's a whole ton of services that are already paid for that. It comes with a one year warranty, it's directly from Caterpillar, they will be maintaining it, not us, um, so we will have a one year warranty on that. So basically, we'll be about seventeen thousand dollars over budget, but the one thing in the budget we are going to lose was under capital projects, we have a tandem retrofit, we were going to see if we could get a hook on our tandem, so we could pick up our own recycling bins and move them up top to the cardboard, which we currently pay mountain waste to do, and they charge us a fee to move it from one place, dump it and put the thing back, but it was not cost efficient to spend twenty five thousand dollars versus the haul fees. So we're kind of removing one item and upping the cost a little bit on a second item, so we'll be bringing that back to you. And then the outside maintenance trucks will be coming from the street department, and then the trailer mounted power washer will be delivered here, uh, either end of February or in March. So we have basically everything coming together, equipment wise, um, on time. Employee hiring and training schedule, I'll go over this really quick. Uh, we did advertise for operators one through three, we had seven applicants, four of those were extremely qualified. Um, we will be hiring three of those four applicants. Parker, who is running our recycling right now, would like to be an operator, one, he wants to move up, uh, we will train him to do that, that's why we have the two weeks of training. Uh, we will be hiring a new part-time recycling operations manager, um, and we'll be going out for advertisement for that pretty quick here, so that we can get that person in and on board and ready to go. Um, Nigel will be moved up to a crew lead, he'll be in charge of everybody basically out there, um, and King will remain as the landfill superintendent overseeing operations and the compliance regulations and testing that will be required to do, or that we are always required to do. So, um, we'll always do the last two, I know there's a lot of text and everybody hates text on slides, but, um, new employees will be brought in around March eighteenth, March on nineteenth, they'll be HR orientation, and then we'll bring them out to the site and we'll do orientation on the cat, the Bomag, the trucks, the water trucks, site training through Nigel and King, and then the following week, uh, Blue Ridge Services is going to come out for one day and just see how everything operates, they're going to kind of visually watch the sites, and then we'll do four days of training with them, uh, two, uh, class days and then two onsite days. We want to make sure everybody knows what they're supposed to be doing, pushing trash uphill or downhill, which way you're supposed to do it, we want to make sure everybody knows the proper, uh, techniques for running landfill. So those are the, I just wanted to kind of give an update on where we're at with all of that. And just bringing down a quick summary of the whole entire business plan, we can talk about the text and composting and everything here in a minute, but basically what we're looking at is landfill revenue stream conservatively is going to be two point four million dollars this year. Um, that does not include any fee changes, uh, for liquids or for municipal waste. That does bring in all of the new expenditures from personnel to administrations to, uh, the renting of the equipment and purchasing, and a quite a large capital projects budget for the year. Um, so two point five eight million dollars would be the expenditures, one point four eight of that is the capital projects that are, um, the purchase of the water truck, uh, and the tandem truck, um, the insulate, the, the wind screens, which we have labeled as installation screens, shop review and upgrades, the shop that's up there needs to be heated, it needs a door repair, there's a whole bunch of things for that, um, the purchase of the pumps, uh, for moving water around the site, the compactor purchase, which was a big number, um, and then we have two capital projects that we may or may not need to do depending on how the composting questions and conversations go. We can build six ponds and we can bring in as much septic and car wash as we want to without having to even really put that in the composting product. Um, it doesn't help us with grease, grease is still an outstanding process, process that would have to still be composted. Um, and we could also, potentially depending on how the composting conversation goes, our composting pit that's up there right now doesn't meet full CDPHD regulations, actually we just got a letter, uh, recently that they want that either updated or removed, I think by twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. So we've got a little bit of time to deal with that, but we have a lot of composting questions to work through. Um, we're going to probably put out an RFP, we've had two interested parties come in to do a partnership, public-private partnership, they both have holistically different approaches to composting, um, and liquid, uh, handling, and then Alyssa from Evergreen Zero Waste, which I had her name incorrectly in the, um, write-up, but, uh, I think that she would probably also be interested in putting in a proposal for an RFP for handling the compost. So we don't want to move too fast because we want to assess what we can do with all of the compost options that we have out there. I don't want to spend, we don't want to spend seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars building ponds and rebuilding a lagoon if we don't have to, so we need to go out for RFP, we need that scope to be defined, um, have people bring it back, and then we need to come together as staff and council and kind of make a decision on how we'd like to see that operation function out there. So I don't have a great answer, I can answer questions on what's been presented if you want to discuss composting.
One, just quick question on this slide. Um, you're saying capital projects are one million four hundred and eighty eight thousand five hundred dollars, which are itemized over on the right, but they're part of this total number, are they not, of two million five hundred and eighty four thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars of expenditures?
So the itemization is on page fourteen of the packet, so if you go to the packet, so-
Well, I'm, I'm, my, my specific question is about the one million six hundred and fifty eight thousand dollar loss.
Yep.
That's basically saying if we add the two point five eight four million to the one point four eight eight million, and then take into account our two point four one four million dollars of revenue, we get one point six five eight million, but the one-
So the capital projects in the two five eight line, I, I should have deleted that. So it's actually two five eight four is the combination of all the expenditures minus the capital projects, and then when you add the capital projects into it, it's actually a four million dollar budget. So I apologize if I should have renegated that out of there.
I see, okay.
So four million dollars minus two point four million dollars is our one point six million dollar loss.
So the one point six is correct, too.
Yes, it is, sorry.
It's sort of a cash flow thing, me being the accountant geek, capital expenditures are not really expenses per se, but they would be cash outflows.
And the, that's why in the packet, Steve kind of put together the budget for twenty nineteen, so if you see in twenty nineteen, we're spending four million seventy two thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars, that's what's projected on the last page of the packet. For the next year, all those capital projects are either done, or we haven't needed to do them, so our operating budget's actually two million dollars. Our revenue is still going to be two point four to two point five million dollars, we're not expecting any of that incoming products to be less, so we're actually going to make a half a million dollars in twenty twenty and thereon, in essence. If we were to change the rates from forty dollars to forty nine dollars, that's an extra two hundred plus thousand dollars in the current amount we have coming in. If we change our liquids from twenty cents to even twenty five cents, that brings in about another hundred to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year. So, and we have other conversations going on right now with Kurt, our consultant, on maybe there is some out-of-county rates, like other counties do, that are a little more impactful to that and would bring additional cash in at the same time.
And when could those go into effect, or are you still considering those? Because those were in here, but they weren't in the twenty nineteen budget, so can they be done in, before summer, or, I mean, how quickly can rates be raised?
Carl. Yes. Yes.
I mean, are you looking for direction on that, or is there some other? Sorry, are you looking for direction on that tonight, or is there some other, are you still working with, like, group, Blue Ridge on that, or?
So we're anticipating coming back to you two more times, once in March, on March seventh for the excavator, so you can see what it is, how much it's going to cost, that it does fit within the budget that we have proposed with a little switching around. Okay. And then the next meeting, we would probably come back with, um, the contracted services that we're looking for out at the landfill, the production of the daily cover, the maintenance, helping with maintenance of roads, the kind of lump things that Heartland was sort of doing for us, that we still need those services provided. We went out for RFP for that, for local excavators, and just said, hey, we want to do this, this, and this during the year, how much is that going to cost us? And we've already projected what that is within the budget, we probably rounded up a little bit, hopefully we'll find out tomorrow, because the bids will be open- Hopefully, we'll find out tomorrow because the bids will be open tomorrow. And we wanted to come back, probably the second meeting in March, and bring that back to you. And we're discussing with Kurt, because Kurt never really did make, our consultant, never did really make a great recommendation on what to do with the liquids. He was very specific on municipal waste. $9 is where you can go with that. He mentioned the rate could be increased for liquid waste, but he didn't give us a number. So I don't know if that's five cents, if that's 10 cents. Can we go to 30 cents, you know, per gallon on that and still be reasonable? So that people don't want to drive to West Garfield, where they're actually increasing some of their capacity out there. We want to make sure we're not losing customers by raising it too much.
Will you, will you survey the customers at all? Because, I mean, I'm just remembering when they were here in the audience, they, some of them were saying, we'd pay more if we had to. We don't want to drive to Montrez or Delta.
So, yes, most of them, some of them, most of them were worried about car wash and grease, which is a little bit going away.
Right.
You know, so they were willing to pay so they don't have to drive to Delta Dawn to get rid of that grease, which is a huge expense. We're not, once again, we're a public facility. We're looking to make sure that we're profitable, that we're not maybe maximizing at this exact moment what that number is. You know, if we raise $9 and we go to 25 cents, we're all of a sudden bringing in eight, $900,000 in profit a year. You know, can we play with that more? I think that's something we have to keep watching. You know, it'll be interesting to see what the reactions are around us when we do that. Because the second we raise rates, everybody else around us will see that and they'll have a reaction to it. So we don't want to go too much
Right.
because we don't want to push people elsewhere, because we still need to be making two, at least $2 million a year to make this a break-even kind of operation.
So so far, the rates are talked about sort of out-of-county. We thought, and will we think about out-of-town?
For liquids, I think we definitely should. Because a high percentage of our liquids are coming out of Pittkin County. They're not coming from Garfield County or Glenwood Springs.
I don't think we'd actually pondered out-of-town. That's an interesting thought.
I like that thought, Rick. I mean, there's restaurants in Carbondale that are in our county that, you know, Newcastle
Or even our friends in Aspen.
Well, it'd be out-of-county, but
That would be definitely out-of-county, yeah. That is something interesting to ponder, and we can throw that at Kurt and just see if that's consideration. Because all of a sudden, okay, they're just driving, there's a difference between driving from Pittkin versus driving from Carbondale. You know, maybe they're willing to drive a little bit farther someplace else. Not that grease is really an option for anybody, which was why everybody was here very concerned we were going to get rid of grease collection. So, but septic and car wash could be a consideration to go another 25 or 30 miles. But we'd have to look at that, how much that would cost. You know, they look at gas and labor and time lost and driving that extra time to help with those rate studies.
Can I ask a question about the budget?
Yeah.
Matt, 2020, you have engineering and contracted services as 25, you know, basically in 2018, 1.074 million, which is the result of getting rid of the contractor. But then it drops down to 494,000, $494,000 and change in 2020. So, and is that amount in 2020, the service contracts to service the equipment that we're purchasing?
So the answer to that question is that is engineering and contracted services. So yes, that is part of the contracts for the equipment. That is also the engineering services that Kurt provides to us on a yearly basis. We spend, I want to say on average, $150,000 or $60,000 with Kurt, helping us keep the operations and compliances up at the landfill. So there's a breakdown that $494,000 is actually a four or five or six items underneath of that. And we can send you the more detailed version of the budget. You were trying to make it, it was fairly simple. Here's money in, money out, but there is a more detailed version of the budget that's available.
So the drop between 2019 and 2020 would be?
Heartland. So we still have to pay Heartland for three, one quarter, which is still $500,000.
To the end of March.
So there, January, February, and March, which is $495,017 or something like that. So there is a huge drop because we no longer require those services. And part of the engineering contracted services, part of the contracted services is this bid that's also coming in for road maintenance and cover material and those kinds of things. So I'll, we'll get you the more detailed budget. I thought we'd start here and then we'd send you the more detailed budget.
Thank you.
Matt, I have a question also about the operating budget on the last page of the packet. You, you don't show any anticipated capital projects and/or purchases beyond 2019. I'm assuming that there will be some. Didn't you just mention that there is probably a pond or something that we're going to have to rebuild?
So the pond is going to be required to be built by 2020. So those are the, the lagoon, I'm sorry, the lagoon will be required to be built by 2020, as King just referenced. So we would have to do that this year. So we need to make a decision on that. It's estimated that's the $280,000, which is a compost pit.
Okay.
We, it's the sludge lagoon. We put all the product in there, mix it up, it bakes, and then it's hauled up to the, the storage facility up top, kind of thing, so.
So as far as additional roads or any work over the next four years, we're not anticipating any additional capital expenditures?
The beautiful thing is we just opened up 4C. So that cell, which is going to be, we'll have our initial two feet of cover per CD-PHE by March 12th. It's a brand-new cell that's down there. Projected life expectancy is 12 to 15 years.
At current volumes.
At current volumes. We'll get the new compactor in. We'll get a little bit better compaction out of that. So we're hoping that that will last 15, maybe 18 years. But we'll kind of keep that up to date as we see our current, what our volumes are. So it already has a road, that'll be part of the road maintenance contract, which is already part of the services. We already have roads up to our other face. If we wanted to have two operating faces, we'd have to have two compactors. But that would depend on volumes. If we get massive volumes, we have another face we could open back up. So there's not a huge amount of expenses we're seeing in the next four to five years. At the end of five years, we may have to look at a new compactor, you know, because it already has 5,000 hours on it. We can squeeze 10,000 or 12,000 hours out of that thing. So we'll have to start looking at those. So we're not seeing any huge expenses. The only expense maybe will be engineering, because we're looking at changing our operating boundaries out there and updating kind of the landfill EDOP so that we're moving forward with regulations correctly. And we're making sure we're expanding out as much as we can to keep our facility open as long as possible.
I kind of thought maybe you would be moving, some employees would maybe move from Heartland over to Glenwood.
I don't know if I can officially say anything about that.
Riding the same piece of equipment, you know. But you just hired some new people, was that?
We are interviewing four people next week.
Gotcha. And the main question that I keep getting, and you've addressed it, I know a number of times tonight, but I've got to slow you down so that I really understand. For the car wash and the restaurants in town that are really concerned about where, how their product is being serviced currently, you don't see any change in that coming up in the immediate future?
Can like King kind of answer that one, but I'd say no.
Yeah, that's part of the reason why we're, we're shopping for the excavator, so that we can continue services the way they exist now. But we're in discussions with CD-PHE in that we are going to have to upgrade. If we, if we stay with the compost system that we have now and, and don't do any other contracts with anyone else, then in the year of 2020, we're negotiating with them to let us go that long before we have to upgrade that pond. Matt's got it in the 1919 budget, but I'm trying to, for cash flow purposes, I'm trying to stretch it out as far as 2020 if I can.
And we still have a shortage of cardboard?
No.
We don't?
We've got more cardboard than I've seen in six years.
Have that happen?
I don't know. It's been the easiest, the easiest management of, of the liquids that I've seen here in, in probably seven years.
Yeah, because that has a direct correlation with, with the grease that you bring in from restaurants. I don't know that it has anything to do with car wash, but
Yes.
But it's the gre, it's how you process grease, so.
Yep.
Septic car wash, lesser grease, 100%.
You know, potentially, and I don't know that, that I could get any inside information about it, but, but a certain septic haul company that was sending the cardboard that they collected through their waste services to Denver, when they couldn't dump their septic truck, I think it got their attention. And we started seeing more cardboard not going to Denver, but coming to us.
Well, thank you very much. And trash companies like Mountain Waste are trying to help. I mean, they're providing a lesser dis, service cost for if a company like, say, the Colorado, Hotel Colorado, if they're willing to take their trash and go recyclables over here, cardboard over here, they will remove that cardboard container for less money. And they will bring it right up to the landfill and they'll put it in a pile.
Is that, is that just unwaxed cardboard, or is that my, all my beer cases and stuff like that? Is it waxed cardboard too?
Yes, basically.
I mean, cereal boxes, sorry. Cereal boxes.
A lot, some places want to take the waxed cardboard, but King has found that we have a great product even with the cardboard mixed in there. To be honest with you, if you go up and look at the pile, the waxed cardboard is a small percentage of what's sitting in the pile. And I check it out about every week or two because I go up there.
Is fat tire a cereal?
It's the Godes household, apparently it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
It feels like it's
Now, this is not an action item, am I correct? This is just a discussion.
Not unless you guys want to give us an action.
Oh, can I have comments? I thought we were going to be having a comment in the vote, but maybe not.
Are they long and drawn out?
No, they're not long.
Shelley provided, Shelley provided questions, which was good. We were going to respond to these and actually just get a punch list and respond to them all.
Okay.
And we can provide it out to council along with the more detailed budget if you would like to shorten the duration here.
Yeah, I totally will. And I just, just to present to council, and I know I copied the mayor on this. I don't know if you got a chance to
I, I did, and I thought they were generally good comments.
For our business plan overall, I'd rather not get into the how to run a landfill because I don't feel like any of us really have that expertise. I'd rather leave that up to staff, but I feel like our role as council can be to kind of set our purpose and goals and have those actually listed in our business plan. So I sent, I sent some examples to staff. I'd love to get comment, and maybe we can talk about those when it comes back. Okay, that's it.
Jim, did you want to say anything?
No, I, I was just going to compliment on the presentation and also see if there was an action item, but that's been answered.
I, I move to, we move on to the next item, which is board and commission appointments.
Thank you.
Matt and King, this is, and Robin, beautiful work. Great job. Thank you. Something to sink teeth into.
So we have three different boards and commissions for whom we are appointing applicants this evening. One is the Financial Advisory Board, for which we have one seat open and one applicant. The applicant is Charlie Willman. I would entertain a motion to approve, or appoint Charlie Willman to the Financial Advisory Board.
They'll move. Second?
I have a motion by Jonathan and a second by Todd to appoint Charlie Willman to the Financial Advisory Board. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. No? Motion carries almost unanimously. Okay, next item is the Planning and Zoning Commission. There are two regular seats available and two alternate seats available. Vote for your regular seat members by putting an R in, in their column, and then put an A for the, the people you want to be the alternates. Yeah, we're doing Rs and As, so that, and then pass your ballots down to
Thank you. Get the rest of them down here? Hey, you don't get to look at those.
I, I can. I just couldn't do it.
Oh, I guess mine was on there.
It's too simple.
And Rs and As look very, very simple.
Not if you write like I do, but where you write.
Carolyn Cipri, A. Dean Kinkle, A.
Wait, wait, hold on. Can we do, can we do As first? Check my sources, because then all the As.
Sure, or just the names?
Just names. Yeah, let's do the
The As first?
Yeah, do the alternates.
Still haven't figured this out after eight years.
Dean Kinkle, Ingrid Wosso. Carolyn Cipri, Cipri, Dean Kinkle. Carolyn Cipri, Dean Kinkle. Carolyn Cipri, Dean Kinkle. Carolyn Cipri, Dean Kinkle. Carolyn Cipri and Dean Kinkle.
Carolyn Cipri, Dean Kinkle, R, A.
Two other.
So the other two
Here we go. Next.
Ingrid Wosso and Sandra Schachner out of Aggers. Okay, okay.
Okay, so, next item, this one's going to be more complicated, so
Speedy Gonzalez.
I don't know how to do it. We got to vote for one member in the, who is in the restaurant business, and that would be Christina Clary. This is the Tourism Promotion Board for the public. So there are two applicants in the restaurant business. One is, no, there's one applicant. Am I right? No, there, yeah, there's two. Christina Clary and Jonathan Gorst are in the restaurant business. We need to vote for one member from the lodging industry. There are two applicants in the lodging industry, Scott Dyer and Suzanne Stewart. Then we need to vote for two members who don't necessarily have a financial interest in a, with or without a financial interest in a tourism-related business. And so we can basically then vote for any two other people. Does that make sense?
What, handle on like restaurants and then lodging and then so forth?
Well, we only have two, two ballots, so we got to put all on
Are we just writing lodging or restaurants?
So just to be clear, there's, for, for restaurant resident? I'm actually confused. For, for restaurant, re, res, restaurant, lodging, and resident, there's two, there's one open seat for all of those?
No, there's one seat open for someone in a restaurant business. One seat open for someone in a lodging industry. And then two seats open for anybody else. And they can be in a restaurant, in a lodging industry, or whatever. Anybody else.
Bless you, Mr. Public. So what time is it?
No, it says right here.
I'm not sure how you're going to do this.
Are we going to pass them down?
So it's four, right?
Yep.
We just vote for four.
Okay, you're just checking.
I just, yeah, I think, can't they figure that out?
Yeah, I think so.
They just check boxes.
Check the right types of boxes.
Please put your hands over your eyes when you pass those down.
Can we just go alphabetically?
Oh, we have one more coming.
If it doesn't work, let me know. Send me a memo.
I've got a short how.
Text me. It was my wife's.
She texts me when you're screwing up too.
Well, one way we, we could do it is just tally, tally just by name. It doesn't matter whether they're restaurant business. Just, and then if the, the four that win meet the criteria, then we've won. then we've won.
Yeah.
That's weird. So, how, how do you want to do that, Brad?
Just, just give, give the names.
Just read them. Sharon Brady, Christina Clary, Scott Dyer, Suzanne Stewart, Sharon Brady, Chris-
I'm sorry, I mean, Sharon Brady, Christina-
Sharon Brady, Christina Clary, Scott Dyer, Suzanne Stewart, Sharon Brady, Christina Clary, Jonathan Gorst, Suzanne Stewart, Sharon Brady, Christina Clary, Scott Dyer, Suzanne Stewart, Sharon Brady, Christina Clary, Scott Dyer, and Suzanne Stewart, Sharon Brady, Christina Clary, Jonathan Gorst, and Suzanne Stewart.
Okay, we got six for Sharon Brady.
I have one more.
Okay.
So, Sharon Brady, Christina Clary, Scott Dyer, and Suzanne Stewart.
Okay.
That's been a long day.
It works.
A long day.
Yes.
We have seven for Sharon Brady, two as residents, we have seven for Christina Clary, restaurants, seven for Suzanne Stewart, resident lodging, and then five for Scott Dyer.
So, he'd be lodging.
Lodging.
And Suzanne would be resident.
So, we did, did we?
Yep, we met the criteria, so we have one lodging, one restaurant, and then two others.
We passed the test.
Alright, yay. So, do we need a motion to appoint all those people?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to appoint the-
That's just about it.
Yeah, the ballots for the, the applicants for both the planning commission and the tourism promotion board, as just reported in the vote.
Is tallied, is so moved?
We have a motion by Shelley and a second by Todd to appoint the applicants as voted on for the planning commission and the tourism promotion board, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Alright, getting closer to a beer. Leslie Bethel memorial designation.
Okay, as you guys know, Leslie was integral to the downtown that we have today, I've heard from many of you, a desire to dedicate a portion of downtown to her, or figure out what we should do. I'm just throwing out some ideas, we talked about naming the underbridge area after Miss Bethel, naming, or the Pet Bridge, potentially dedicating one of the future water features, or asking the DDA to incorporate a memorial to Miss Bethel and the DDA lot. Formerly known as-
Brass statue would, I don't want to make light of this, I'm just, I'm always promoting brass statues, so I thought that would be.
There goes one.
Yeah, I don't think, we're not promoting any one particular of these ideas, but I do think it would be appropriate to come up with a way to honor her.
Steve? I'm just going to jump right to a motion that we dedicate the underbridge as Bethel Plaza, and I think we should have a suitable plaque beneath the time capsule that would be somewhat matching, that would kind of describe, you know, why her name is on that plaza.
Second.
Brief, but, you know, she certainly was an incredibly important part of our community, and, and that should be spelled out a little more than just a name and a plaza there.
I'll second that.
Sounds great.
I have a motion by Steve and a second by Jim to name the underbridge area as Bethel Plaza, and to have a plaque prepared that describes her involvement in the downtown, and placed on the pillar below the time capsule.
Thank you.
I'd like that plaque to definitely have something to the effect of, of how integral her vision was for-
Yeah.
For that area, and the, the dedication and the hours she put into making sure that that bridge looks like it does now. Because I remember back when I was the DDA liaison, and we were doing the Grand Avenue Bridge, not too many people were willing to raise their hand and take the risk of, of saying, I, I got the aesthetics on this bridge, I'll take responsibility, and, and she did it, and pulled it off with, to me, with just incredible results.
Yeah, and that was certainly part of my motion, and-
Yep.
I really think that that should come back to council, you know, for edit.
We can provide you kind of a, a mock-up.
Yeah, and we can help with that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't know, Todd and I could actually sit down, because we both have been, worked so closely with Leslie, and-
We'll come up with something, help, help out.
To come up with that, to help, and send it to you for edit.
If you guys will send me the language you want.
I, I, I would also just like to add that it'd be great if we could do the dedication of it during the, kind of, the ribbon cutting of the whole Seventh Street project sometime in August or September.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I mentioned that to her family at, at Leslie's funeral, and I think they would all appreciate the opportunity to be there.
Yeah.
Alright, so, any further discussion? Anyone from the public want to comment on this?
Excellent motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, let's go ahead and call the question.
Ingraham, yes, Goldish, yes, Davis, yes, Gambay, yes, Lake, yes, Burris, yes, Cab, yes, Washington, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Does anyone have any, oh, we have city manager report.
I just wanted to let you guys know that we are looking to do additional rock scaling on South Midland, we've already been in touch with a couple of businesses, and we're going to get proposals, just because what would make the potholes worse would be a large rock.
Okay, is that it?
I'd love to be involved in that, I've got a big rock bar, be able to roll big boulders down that hillside.
Oh.
Wouldn't that be great?
That would be fun.
It, it's, it's fun until they go through the houses on the downhill side of Midland, and then it's not fun anymore.
Government immunity.
Okay.
Speaking of immunity. Since speaking of immunity, you got anything to say?
Is there a, a report from our city attorney?
Uh, no, there is not, we've got some such type of access.
Okay, to my knowledge, there's no correspondence that I need to bring to any of the tensions, so I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Oh, man. I'd like to add to that, I'd just like to modify that slightly, I can't say related to potential litigation regarding all routes and Ross.
Ross, yeah. Jonathan Goode is moving to go into executive session for the purpose of conducting a conference with the city manager and city attorney to discuss the city's purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real property, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators, and to conduct a conference with the city attorney to receive legal advice in accordance with CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A, B, and E related to Hanging Lake and the Ross contract in the West Glenwood Mall.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously, it is February twenty-first.